All right, good evening, everyone. I call this January 28th, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Barbara Baca will be participating remotely via Zoom. All other commissioners are here in person. We're going to go ahead and start this evening with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Benson. I wanted to take a moment here as we prepare for a moment of silence and recognize an individual that I've not had, I did not have the pleasure of meeting him, but I've heard so many amazing things about him from advocates in our community. And as an avid cyclist myself, Mr. Chuck Malagodi, who was recently killed in a hit-and-run attack, a hit-and-run accident on his bicycle, just been an incredible advocate in our community for cycling, safe cycling, starting and leading the Esperanza Bike Shop along with our very own Commissioner Barbara Baca, who was involved with that, with Chuck. So I've just heard incredible things about him and hope that we can all keep him in our thoughts, his family, and, you know, all of those folks that are out on our streets and being killed on our streets. So, thank you.
Please stand.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you.
That takes us to the announcement of additions and changes to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you. Item 3A, Commissioners, Housing Development Services will be added to the agenda as Item 9C under adoption of resolution. Item 3B, Commissioners, is a letter of support for spouses of service members be added to the agenda as Item 10C under approvals. Item 3C, Economic Development, State Fairgrounds Tax Increment Development District Intent Resolution be added to the agenda as Item 9D under adoption of resolutions. And Item 4A, I'm sorry, 4A Commissioners, Agnes Noonan Acknowledgement will be deferred to a future meeting.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, do you have any changes? All right, not seeing any. I make a motion to adopt the changes to the agenda.
Second.
Second from the Vice Chair. Any discussion on these changes? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five to zero vote. And Julianne, just a process question here real quick. Do we need a separate vote on the agenda itself?
Mr. Chair, now that will satisfy the changes.
Okay, thank you. So we are not, we do not have any proclamations this evening, which takes us to public comment. So, in our public comment section, which will occur before communications, each person has two minutes, and you'll be alerted to your time remaining by the lights in front of you. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left, and red means your time has expired. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And in order to maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone that is present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. And Shaiyanti, if you could please announce the names of the first few speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today we have 14 speakers, including the Zoom. We will start with in-person. I will call three names together, starting with Don Schroeder, then Ms. Ward, and John Bolton.
And when you know that you're going to be up on the list next, if you would just make your way down to the front, that way we can keep things moving. Mr. Schroeder, you have the floor.
Don Schroeder, I have no right to much more than I need, while millions of our sisters and brothers worldwide suffer hunger, sickness, winter's cold, and have no hope. I lived well last year, 2024, on $9,642 plus Medicaid paid by the state. I enjoy living simply below the U.S. poverty level for me as a single person. I buy no booze, no junk food, no meals in restaurants, no expensive clothes, no expensive jewelry. As a raw foods vegan, I eat healthier than many millionaires or billionaires. I've owned no car for 45 years. I would not keep a car given to me free. My home for almost 15 years is one sunny rented room, nine and a half by 12 feet, with six windows in the house of a friend. I have not traveled outside New Mexico for over 30 years. In this catastrophic climate crisis, the American dream of a big house, fancy cars, driving and flying thousands of miles, eating meat and dairy, is a nightmare disaster for all life on Earth. I am responsible for how I live, regardless what my friends, neighbors, corporations, governments do. We can wake up. We can change our spoiled rotten ways. I thank many, many people who have taught me to enjoy living simply on enough.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder.
John Bolton.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thanks. My name's John Bolton. I live within walking distance of the State Fair entrance on Central in Louisiana. So I'm a resident of the International District. I run East Central Ministries. I lived, worked in the neighborhood for 26 years, and I'm here to just make sure, celebrate the fact that we have a strong neighborhood. We meet, we organize, we come together, we're paying attention. We're super happy that Commissioner Baca joined our neighborhood meeting that's looking at the State Fairgrounds. And as we've been working on Community Land Trust, vacant lots, new models of housing, our goal is really giving voice to and making sure that our neighborhood residents have self-determination for where redevelopment happens. So from a Central Ministry standpoint, I don't speak for all my neighbors, but from our standpoint, we need development in our neighborhood, but we're going to be paying attention. We want to be at the table to help shape it and guide it, making sure that we celebrate the best of the International District in all of our culture and everything we need and want, and we need real affordable housing. There's a lot of voices that are very concerned about losing our flea market, where families can get in for $3, buy goods. Those kind of things are important. I think we can incorporate that into new development at the fairgrounds. So we're learning about TID. We know that investment has to happen. We support that, but we're going to be keeping an eye, paying attention. We want to be at the table, helping shape that redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton.
Emery Lumbey. Adam Rachel. Michelle Melendez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emery Lumbey. I am one of the International District. I am one of the International residents in the International District, and I am a Community Ambassador for Choice Neighborhood. And one of my most memorable memories growing up in the International District was with my brother and my grandma, what we used to do every Saturday and Sunday was to go to the flea market. And that's what me and my grandma used to love doing. And she used to be able to, being able to, being able to be young, and she used to buy, buy me like, one time, there was one time she bought me the skateboard because I was having a hard time going from here to school every day, because sometimes I used to walk. And she was able to give me my first longboard, and that was very memorable for me, and it made it a lot easier for me to be able to get to school on time because I used to be late every day. So the flea market was very memorable for me and my brother, growing up in the International District. And the flea market also means a lot to my neighbors, and it's one of the great things that we have in the International District, and it brings a lot of people. And every time when I go to the International District, I see different kinds of cultures. I see different people from everywhere all over the world, selling their merchandise. And people work hard, they work, those sellers, they work hard throughout the weekend to be able to sell their goods, their, yeah, their special goods. And I'm not able to find that anywhere else I go. So that's very valuable to us, and thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for being here.
Adam Rachel. Michelle Melendez. Carlos Profit.
Good afternoon, Chair Olivas and members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here representing Casa de Salud, a nonprofit healthcare clinic in Albuquerque for over 20 years. Our clinic provides care to 7,500 individuals last year in the integrated healthcare model that's called for in the Behavioral Health Authority's strategic plan that you'll be discussing tonight. And this is where primary care and behavioral health care are provided under the same roof in a culturally responsive, trauma-responsive manner. And tonight, we're here to urge your support of this strategic plan, and I'd like to highlight several parts of it that are really transformational for Burnaleo County. First, the Needs Assessment Section connects the many health and social indicators together in a way that the county has not always done, recognizing how action on things like housing will make a difference in behavioral health, and that will make a difference on crime and deaths of despair. This is a huge departure from taking a siloed approach to each need that the county has. Second, the plan provides a blueprint for the kind of infrastructure that's necessary to address these issues at the level of the problem. This is a huge departure from a patchwork approach of funding various well-deserving programs but without a plan and hoping for big outcomes. Plus, it does this without throwing the baby out with the bathwater. It builds on the foundation that you all have laid over the years with the Behavioral Health Initiative. Lastly, this plan is as specific enough to be actionable in the near term to solve those problems that can be solved now, instead of waiting until there's a perfect infrastructure in place. We appreciate that there are actionable items, such as a pharmacy that's needed at the Metro Detention Center. It's nice to know that there are rational plans in place for our future as a community amid an otherwise unstable environment. Thank you. We urge your support.
Thank you, Ms. Melendez.
Carlos Profit.
Good evening, all. Carlos Profit, I don't know which of you Commissioners or if any of you were party to forming this nuisance abatement mechanism with the zoning, but Nick Hamm and his minions are using it on the Pajarito Mesa in, well, they've given themselves the power to condemn, demolish, cart off, give the property owner the bill. No defense counsel, no judge, no court-appointed interpreter. So they've put all the fancy words on it you want, theft, property theft, whatever you want to call it. They've stolen people's animals, caused, you know, huge, my neighbor's peace of mind, which is about all we've got. Anyway, I don't know how aware you are of any of this, of what you're party to, but it's criminal. It's going to cost the taxpayers a lot to put these people right, to put things back as they were before. Mike Gallegos and Enrique, whatever his last name is, went and stole all these people's property and dispersed it. That's just one, you know, in the two minutes that I have, that's one of very many. I could go on and on, but anyway, there it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now we will move to our remote speaker. I will start with Dr. Geralo Dosianalo.
Okay. Can you hear me? Can you see me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and County Commissioners and the staff. Blessed, healthy New Year to you and your family. I'm an alternative health doctor and minister. Most of you know I waited nine years legally to become a naturalized U.S. citizen. Two Mondays ago, the Democrats and Republican Parties of New Mexico honored Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and remembered his legacy of championing civil rights, faith, justice, and freedom, which has left a lasting impact on America. Did you know Dr. King embodied the values we as Republicans hold dear? The Republican Party was originally founded as the Anti-Slavery Party in 1854, with Republican President Abraham Lincoln issuing the Emancipation Proclamation and supporting the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment to abolish slavery, grant citizenship, and voting rights to Black Americans in that order. Dr. King's life and activism reminds us of the power of standing up for what is right, even when we're in the minority. Let us honor Dr. King's legacy by carrying on his message of unity. During the march in Washington, D.C. in 1963, Dr. King's renowned words speak to the hearts of both Republican Party and Democratic Party. And I quote, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character," end quote. That said, I have a dream also that our state and nation will once again come together in unity, peace, and love, just as our Lord Jesus loves us all unconditionally, to promote life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, starting with ridding sanctuary and catch-and-release policies by enforcing our actual constitutional laws to reduce crime, sex slavery, and drug trafficking. Both our Lord Jesus and Dr. King lay down their laws for others.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you. God bless you.
Roger Valdez.
Hello, Chair Olivas, members of the Commission. This is Roger Valdez. I am Director of the Center for Housing Economics, and we're a think-do change tank that focuses on housing and especially working on policy changes, developing innovative affordable housing, and also trying to innovate new financing and other opportunities to make housing more efficient in Albuquerque and other locations. I wanted to say today that the Tax Increment Financing District is an incredibly powerful and important tool, and you're going to be considering creating one for the fairgrounds redevelopment if that happens. And we've been collaborating with East Central Ministries on a variety of projects, including acquisition of land that has been abandoned in the, or underused in the International District. And we hope that you'll consider very seriously community benefits agreements and keeping the community at the table in a serious and meaningful way to identify community benefits, to quantify those, measure them, and be sure that whatever happens at the fairgrounds, regardless of the outcome of the master plan and other decisions, that the Tax Increment Financing District is used for the maximum benefit of the community, including acquisition of land and redevelopment of that land for affordable housing before prices rise and people become priced out because of new investment and new jobs. We're working in the legislature now to take a closer look at requiring housing studies for both LEEDA projects and TID projects to be sure that we get the best data to inform your decisions. And I've sent along a statement that we've worked on that's evolving about the fairgrounds, and we hope that you'll take a look at that and work with us collaboratively as you make those important decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that concludes our public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaiyanti. So that will go and take us on to our communications items. We have two items this evening, and we're going to start out with an item that I am sponsoring a discussion that I think is really important and I'm really looking forward to. We have our Deputy County Manager of Community Services, Dinette Townsend, here to present and introduce this topic on supporting youth out of school time programming. And then we also have some of our partners from the Youth Services Coalition here tonight as well to give us a few words and share some of their work.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I believe there are slides on their way up here. Do I pull them up on here? You know you're going to have to assist me in that process. From where? Sorry, Julianne. Noted. Thank you. All right. So one of the things that is near and dear to my heart, for those that don't know me very well, I spent my first 14 years in my professional career and then another, at least six and beyond after that, advocating for out-of-school time programs. I worked for the YMCA as a therapist, doing non-clinical intervention with middle school and high school students. And it was incredibly important to me because it's what I needed when I was a kid. And I think that what we do here in Burnaleo County really well is look at how we improve the quality of life in the community by increasing access to many things, one of which is youth programming. And when we look at thriving communities, what we're really talking about is expanded and rich learning time, which provides access to safe places, trusted faces, and nourishment. That is where a lot of kids get meals. It's where they find adults that they can count on every day. Agency is one of the most critical components of developing adolescents, is to help them have opportunities to build their own personal power, to feel like they can engage and contribute and control their own destiny. And then action, that is where they get engaged, they take on projects, they lead things themselves because we have helped them with the opportunities that develop those skills. So in Burnaleo County, what we do is Partnering for Promise. We look at ways to leverage and lean into partnerships and lean in to the community school strategies of looking at how we all contribute to a common result, and in this case, it's developing young people. The idea that we do this through policy and advocacy for federal and state funding, where in particular the ABC Community School Partnership and the Board of ABC contribute to this with its partners, we look at programmatic oversight to other out-of-school time funding to ensure that it's aligned with the mission of our schools, of our community school board and strategies. And then we also look at identification and supportive funding to support nonprofits and community organizations, because we know that a lot of small organizations don't have the capacity to compete. So we utilize our support to help them identify funds, work with them in partnership, help facilitate sometimes that funding if it's coming from the state, to really provide support to our community partners. And then the 100% Community Initiative, which is really a countywide initiative that includes out-of-school time programming and working to leverage all of those partners and their needs so we understand from the people on the ground, working with community, what it is they need from our infrastructure to provide that support. So very specifically Partnering for Promise in Burnco, we have the ABC Community School Network, where the county is directly providing support, financial support, to Highland High School, to the Hub, and to their autobody program. We are looking at our all-hands-in-artshub programming through our federal community schools grant, our West Mesa Workforce Development Grant in partnership with Commissioner Barbara Baca and Representative Joy Garrett in developing workforce opportunity pathways for high school students, and most recently, a jewelry-making program for Albuquerque High. Those are all youth-led and youth-requested initiatives. We also support and work with New Mexico Junior Achievement, the Behavior Health Initiative Prevention Funding. We helped nonprofits understand their place in prevention, non-clinical prevention work so that they could fit under our BHI funding. And then also our Burnaleo County Community Centers, of course, where they partner with various organizations and provide their own programming, just to name a few. I wanted to tell a really brief story. Youth Development Principles achieve the five Cs: their competence, confidence, connection, character, and caring. And when all of that happens, young people have the agency to contribute. Recently, completely unrelated to this presentation, I had coffee with a community organizer. She reminded me of my experience with the Elevate Initiative, which was my first endeavor into the community school work back in 2007, 2008. And there was a young person who was a part of the YMCA Youth and Government Program. And she was a high school student. She was really engaged. She wanted to participate in the after-school programming that we were doing at Grant and Wilson Middle Schools. So she, along with the other YMCA, with the YMCA staff member, decided to launch a middle school youth and government program that year. She took it on, she built it, she ran it. She was a senior in high school. And what I didn't know was she used those experiences with youth and government, with the Elevate programming, to get into the University of Americas, University of Americas. But her most recent jobs, she graduated in 2013 from high school. Her most recent jobs were the Chief of Staff and Director of Communications for Representative Gabe Vasquez. She's rocking and rolling. She's super active in her community. She had nothing that would have said she was going to go one direction or another. What she had was an engagement with an out-of-school time program that met her needs and her interests and her world, and helped her build those skills herself, and she ran with it. We have, I'm sure every one of these organizations that's about to come up here and talk to you has similar stories. I've worked with all of them over the years in one way or another. I remember when Warehouse 505 was launched, along with Extreme Sports. But I hope that we will all continue to remember that behavioral health and the healthy development of our young people happens long before we need an intervention. And these are the programs that help that happen. Doesn't mean we'll ever get rid of the rest, but we need a continuum. And the county has always been incredibly supportive, particularly in the realm of community schools. So I would like to invite our guests up to come talk to you more about what they do on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, DCM Townsend.
That young lady's actually on our Board of Directors now.
Oh, good job, see? I didn't want to use names because I didn't ask permission. Where? What is it? What is it?
I don't know. Out-of-school time presentation. Is that yours?
That's mine.
Just a few technical difficulties here, folks.
I'm sorry. I don't know where she's, I'm just not sure where it's, I think they're putting it on here.
Okay. Help is on the way.
I thought I followed on the rules.
There's our guy. You should get him a cape.
I know, right? He comes to the rescue every day, every hour. Did they just add it? That's one I just had. Yeah, that's what happened.
All right, let's just.
That's right, go ahead and chat. We'll go with it.
Great job highlighting the impact of out-of-school time programs. Thank you, Commissioners, for inviting us here tonight. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Colby Wilson, CEO, Chief Encouragement Officer for the Boys and Girls Clubs, and I'm here tonight representing the Youth Services, New Mexico Youth Services Coalition of the Boys and Girls Clubs, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Junior Achievement, the YMCA, and Warehouse 505. Our organizations have been working with the county for years, trying to address the many challenges the youth in our community face every day. About two years ago, we came together and formed a coalition around three key principles. First, while each of our organizations could point to the good work we were doing, we could show good data individually, we were not having the collective impact that our community needs. Overall, the state of our youth was not improving. Second principle, in order to have this collective impact, we must collaborate instead of compete. We must complement instead of duplicate. And the third principle, we must do a better job advocating and building trust with our government agencies. We want you all to look to us to help you with some of the issues that you are facing, and we want you to trust us to deliver on these problems and helping you with those. Chairman Olivas, Commissioners, you've heard our message, you've toured our programs, and you are clearly motivated to support programs that address the needs Dinette highlighted. Thank you for your interest in what we do. Last school year, our coalition served over 2,000 middle school students in a morning program that provided physical and emotional safety, mentorship, performing arts, sports and recreation, financial literacy, and trauma-informed care. Every day before school starts at 9:15, we provided this program at 25 of the 27 middle schools, and it was a huge help to the communities and those families that had to be at work early and needed a safe, positive place for their kids to be. This school year, we were only able to secure funding to provide after-school coalition programs at 12 middle schools. Due to the bell schedule change, the need shifted to the afternoon, and we had to scramble to try to get the afternoon schedule or the afternoon need funded. While we did a good job, and I think all of us are working really hard to fill these gaps and these needs that we're seeing, especially with our middle school and high school kids, we need significantly more support to close these gaps. You know, we're at 12 middle schools, there's 27 middle schools, just public middle schools, not counting charters, things like that. That doesn't even touch on the need at high school while we're all working hard in these areas. We need more support, not just next school year, but every school year. We appreciate the challenges that the county's trying to address, and we know it's complex, all the decisions you have to make around your budget and all the needs that you want to fund. We do encourage you to think about the value of prevention. Let me pull this up here. Finally found my slides. So that's always the push-pull, right? Intervention versus prevention, the immediate need. We need to do both. I think we all understand that. We want you to think about this as you're making your decision. Our coalition has the expertise needed to work with these hard-to-reach tweens and teens. Anybody who has a middle schooler or high schooler understands that a lot of times they're choosing to come to these programs, and we have the staff, the expertise, the national support and training that's necessary to reach those kids, keep them involved, and we have the data that shows that what we do works. Youth development is the only thing we do. You all have a lot to do, and we want you to look to us to address that need for the community, for the county, and all the kids in this community. If we do our job well, kids graduate high school with a plan for the future, and they don't end up in a lot of the intervention situations that we have to provide emergency funding for and need to help people get out of immediately. We need your support not only to sustain some of our current efforts, but to bring this impact to more schools, to more neighborhoods, and to more kids who need us most. You can see kind of our framework here. $800,000 can double the amount of kids Junior Achievement is serving from 12,000 to 24,000 students. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, with $800,000, they can double the amount of matches from 1,000 to 2,000 students by growing their school-based programs. $800,000, the YMCA can serve 1,000 more teens, middle school kids in sports and after-school programs. Warehouse 505 needs $400,000 to expand their screen printing workforce development program into a sustainable revenue source for the organization. Boys and Girls Clubs, our middle school programs in a tough spot. We have no funding for these 12 sites beyond June 30th of this year. Many of you have seen these programs, you know how vital they are, not just for the existing sites, but for the other middle schools that need those programs. We're looking for $2 million to make sure every middle school student in APS can join the Boys and Girls Club, participate in our coalition programs, either at their school or at our new teen center that's coming online this summer. So we've all talked, and we think that this funding plan can, for the most part, close the gap that we have in our community for out-of-school time programs for middle school and high school kids. There's a lot of programs, Dinette may have mentioned this, there's a lot of programs for elementary kids. Most of the schools have a program onsite. There's the licensing childcare funding that can support those programs year after year. Not a lot of free opportunities for middle school and high school kids to get this support that we're talking about here. So we're asking for your support in the following ways. Obviously, help us advocate at the state level, state budget. There's some out-of-school time line items that are going through. Senator Padilla has a bill for $20 million for out-of-school time. Help us push that through and get access to it. And then two, identify initiatives in your own budget that our coalition would be a good fit for. Mental health, community safety, academic success, workforce readiness, trauma-informed care, economic development. These are all pieces that we can address with this middle school and high school programming. So wrapping up, I just want to, you know, this coalition, none of this would have happened without the leaders standing behind me. They've inspired me to step up my game to make sure we're doing more for this community. So I want to introduce each of them. Aaron Haggenau, Junior Achievement. Raise your hand. Angela Reed Padilla, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Terry Gonzalez, Warehouse 505. And Roberto Aguirre, YMCA. If any of you all would like to come up and say anything, now's the time.
Mr. Chair, I know you guys have a full agenda, but thank you so much for having us back. We enjoyed the proclamation. And what I wanted to say to you is that I started my career as a social worker, and one of our messages tonight is that our community needs, what we have to offer, we are evidence-based, and we do have a very structured plan and longevity for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We're over 100 years old, but we are non-clinical prevention services. And as a social worker, I would have kids on my caseload that I felt like I was re-traumatizing them when I was trying to help them. Like, we would pull them out of the homes to try to keep them safe and put them in placements where it was worse than where they were, and I hated my job, I did. But I kept referring my kids to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and they would come back with big smiles on their face and talk about how their big brother or big sister was helping them and was supporting them. And it made me realize, I was so fortunate in my life to have the mentors and the support I did. In so many of our kids, it doesn't take a lot, but it is out-of-school time, it's out-of-family time, it's giving them those extra supports. And when you have a national organization like ours, and then you have the power of our coalition, that really, this can be the generational change that we need. And we see all the great work that Burnley County is doing with behavioral health, but we think we're missing that component because it's still very clinical. In fact, so much so that some of our services, we can't even be eligible necessarily if we don't have licensed clinicians. And yet, our prevention work is proven effective. Big Brothers, Big Sisters just released our national study showing that young adults in their 20s are significantly more likely to have a higher earning potential, and many of them, their choices for college and career map to their mentors rather than their families. And that shows the ability for lasting change. And the last thing I'll say is my little sister, Jacqueline, we've been together for nine years, she just graduated from U&M in nursing, and she's going back now to the school where I mentored her to be a mentor. And that's my dream. I think that's the legacy we want to leave, is helping kids, help others as they grow up. So thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for all of these leaders being here tonight. Actually, if Chambers will join me in a round of applause for all of you. You know, we already did our recognition of Youth Mentoring Month and the important work that you all do. Well, Mentoring Month in general doesn't just have to be youth. Last week, last meeting, but we're still in January, so I think it's really fitting that we're continuing this discussion in perhaps a more robust way. So I want to give other Commissioners an opportunity to ask questions or weigh in, but I did want to just read a couple of things that, this is some background information that our Deputy County Manager provided, and I think it sets the stage for where I'm going. I haven't asked for each of us in a little while here. But it's important to note that in this last fiscal year, the city of Albuquerque, the City Council stepped up and provided a total of $500,000 to the Youth Services Coalition that may or may not be renewed for another year. I think that's important that we have those conversations with our colleagues on council about that funding. And then I have some other information on some of the other funding amounts. A little less than $200,000 was allocated for the program at Highland High School for the Autobody Hub. We do have a small recurring appropriation, $50,000 annually, for financial literacy programs through Junior Achievement, and we've done some smaller one-time increases. And then our Arts Hub, which Deputy County Manager talked about, about $80,000 a year for that project, $20,000 one-time money for the West Mesa High School mural project, and $20,000 for some youth radio development. So we do have some county resources committed to youth services programming, but I want to talk a little bit more here, after I hear from my colleagues, about, you know, my thoughts on this and where we could go as a commission and as individual Commissioners on this. But we'll open up the floor and see if anybody else wants to jump in here with questions or comments. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you to every, each of you and all of your teams. I mean, it's a labor of love what you do. That's all I did growing up. If it wasn't free after school, then I was filling my time with whatever else I could fill my time with. It wasn't always good. But it's extremely important, and yeah, I've personally given to your organizations and a few others, as well as advocated for you on the commission, and I plan to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. So we're going to go to Vice Chair Barboa and then Commissioner Barbara Baca online, and then Commissioner Frank Baca.
I just wanted to thank you all again. I was both the product of youth service programs that were sometimes during school, sometimes after school, and summer programs. And my kids also grew up as a single parent, a young single parent. I definitely relied on the out-of-school time for care for my kids when I had to work, right? And it was a struggle, there's often waiting lists, and so I really appreciate your want to continue to expand and be able to reach more students. So I hope we can find a path. I think that, are all of you now directly in connection with schools, or how do you mostly get the youth into the programs? Like, what are your recruitment or outreach strategies?
Our recruitment strategies, being five different organizations with five different missions, are varied. I can say for Junior Achievement, our primary constituent are educators. So our over 500 volunteers work directly with, primarily during the school day, to bring curriculum to this year, 14,000 students. And Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Warehouse 505, and YMCA, their primary constituent are parents. And that's why some of these national organizations are household names, is because parents, as you mentioned, Commissioner, are so thankful, hold these organizations so close because of those services deep in their heart, because feeling the care, love, attention, and concern that these missions bring to the households of Burnley County.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, our recruitment strategies are as varied as our organization, both outreach as well as meeting the needs for those that, you know, reach out to us as well. Thank you for that question.
I'm going to add something too. And one thing that we've been working on the last few years is engaging high schoolers to be mentors themselves, and they both receive services from us in mentoring them and building their senior portfolio, but they also are giving back. So really, with that collective, in my agency, we have well over 1,000 volunteers every year, and that's in one-to-one mentoring, in schools and community-based.
Thank you, Vice Chair Barboa, and now we'll go to Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm from home, a little bit ill over here, but you're playing my tune, your play. Albert Einstein said, "Play is the," what did he say, "the highest form of research." I got into the field of parks and recreation to do exactly what you all are doing in our community, and so I am 100% in favor of focusing on our youth and providing programs, positive, safe environment for kids to be creative, experiential education, have fun. Chair Olivas talked about my dear friend Chuck Malagodi and our bicycle education program, huge success, and it got those kids engaged in something purposeful. And so I do feel that our conversation about even our opioid settlement funding, we need to talk about using some of that money for prevention, keeping kids from going down the path that sometimes our children go. And I really, really strongly appreciate your collaboration in this, and you have a member on your team, so thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, or Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca, and Commissioner Frank Baca next.
Thank you. I'm very happy to hear about this.
Your mic, Commissioner.
Somebody assist me on that. Thank you for being here. I'm happy.
I'm happy to hear this discussion about prevention. I think we're going to hear some more about this topic in general later on in this agenda. I will say there are many people my age who believe that a downward spiral in Albuquerque began when sports and music were removed from middle schools. I remember that. I was just there, about there. And so, yeah, I'm just very happy. I, for one, for what it's worth, would be very happy to support your efforts. I have a good friend in the audience there, Mr. Harnett, Keith Harnett, who I know is an amazing volunteer. And, you know, and so, I am, what I can do, whatever I can do to support your efforts, I am more than happy and willing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. So, Commissioners, what I wanted to suggest, so the city council stepped up with half a million dollars in their last budget. And given the district direct funding that each of us has in a fairly significant amount, I don't think it's a huge lift to ask each of us to contribute $100,000 to this effort to match what the city council has done. Because, and, and as I said, I also think we need to step up and talk to our council, our counterparts in the council, and ask them to reaffirm that contribution. That's a million dollars locally. And I think that gives us a really strong voice to be able to go to the legislature and show that we have local buy-in here. You know, we have put in our own local funds, our own scarce resources, to make sure that we're standing up these prevention programs, that we're working on this kind of programming. And I think it's really important that we commit this for at least two years. I think, you know, given where each of us is in our election cycles, and that funding is available to each of us for at least two years. And I think that's one of the main issues that I heard when sitting down with Colby, for example, and touring Kennedy Middle School, was, we have this this year, but we don't know where it's going next year. And just this year, in their cycle, they basically figured out that they had the funding to do this a couple of weeks before they started the programs. And so, to what our vice chair was talking about, you know, that's probably not the best way to outreach and design and implement a program, right? Is just a couple of weeks before you know that it's going live. No fault of the programmers and providers, that is the funders, right? That's the policymakers and the appropriators, folks like us up here and folks in the legislature in the city. So, I want to throw that out there as a, as an ask to all my colleagues. I know that those are funds that are really important in each of our districts, but I think it's a crucial opportunity for us to step up, match what the city council's done. Of course, doing all of this through our proper procurement process, working with our community school, our community schools division, and through all the proper channels. But I guess that's my ask. I think that's how we can support these organizations, as well as when we're up in the Capitol this session, I'll be up there tomorrow, actually, talking to legislators, especially those on our appropriations and finance committees, which Senator Padilla is one of those, to make sure that we support his initiative to expand that funding statewide, because I think we can have a very good assumption that some of that money will flow into the Albuquerque region to further bolster these efforts, as well as statewide, because we know that this is a statewide problem. So, I think that's, that's my ask.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So, our next item, we are going to have the University of Hospital report, the second quarter FY '25 presentation by UNM CEO Kate Becker.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kate Becker. I'm the CEO for UNM Hospital. This is our second quarter report, and you have the report in your packet. But I do just want to highlight a couple of items I want to start with. This is the first meeting I've been to since the election, I believe, so thank you for the mill levy support. Thank you for the support of our county. We're extremely grateful for that, and for your individual support throughout that whole process, as we went through the listening sessions and developed the information for our community in support of that. So, finances, year-to-date, and we're halfway through our fiscal year, and our bottom line at the moment is just over a negative $1 million. So, on a budget of over a billion, we're essentially about at breakeven. That's not where we want to end the year, but the biggest contributor to that is our contract labor costs and other employment costs. So, we do still have, in the hospital, about 3.5% of our workforce is travelers. It had been as high as five. So, we've really been able to bring that down, and we will continue that movement to help manage those expenses. The other thing I wanted to say is that we've all had a significant focus on behavioral health the last year. And so, as you know, the Crisis Triage Center opened last June. We were really excited about that opening and grateful for the partnership on that. One of the things you'll see in your report is a report on the number of visits, both for behavioral health emergency services and behavioral health urgent care services. Those services did transition to the Crisis Center in June. And if you look at the second half of the year, you'll see we went from an average of 500 visits a month to 750 visits a month in the emergency services, and 125 to 200 in the urgent care services. So, that's a 50% increase in emergency services and a 75% increase in urgent care services. So, really starting to meet the need of our community and create that access for folks who are seeking that service. We're also providing hundreds of hours of peer support, and that continues to expand, and it's been a really welcoming space for our patients and families, and so, we're really happy to be able to share that with our community. That's it for me, and I'm happy to stand for questions.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Hello, welcome again, and thank you for a great report. I just wanted to hear that again. So, and that is, the 250 more that you received, what tide period was that again?
That's on a monthly average from June to December. So, that's what we're seeing, an increase each month between June and December.
And that was, if I may, Chair, through the, through, we were able to access those more because of the crisis table? Is that what the?
Exactly. The expansion of services through the Crisis Center is what's enabled us to provide that additional access.
Wonderful. It was great to hear those, that news. I think that's the only question for now. I might want to follow up with you online to get the, once again, the patient assistance by, for indigent care. I'm always at a loss to really find it on these. But I think I can follow up with you about that.
Thank you. Be happy to do that.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What do you attribute that increase of service to? How is staffing? How, you know, the operations? Yeah, that's a huge jump year-over-year. So, well done. But how do you explain that?
Thank you for that question, and I would almost say it's a good news, bad news thing, right? Because the good news is we've created the access. The bad news is that the community is so much in need of that. But I would say that it's been a couple of things. The first one is the publicity surrounding the opening of the Crisis Center really did help make the community aware of that service being available. And the increased use then creates more awareness, and that creates more awareness that brings us more use. So, I think that's been important. The other thing that's been really important is we've been able to expand our psychiatric residency programs and other training programs because of that additional clinical capacity. And that means we have more providers in our community, and that also has been able to increase access to services.
Thank you, Dr. Becker. What about staffing? Where are your staffing levels at?
For the Crisis Center? I don't know the Crisis Center specifically. I know overall, we are running, actually, we're well-staffed. Our challenge is making sure that we have core staff and not travelers in the staff, because it's a significant additional expense.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Becker. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Frank Baca?
Just a comment. This is the first time I've reviewed this type of report, and I just, as I was reading through it, I just thought to myself, I was very impressed by the data that is collected. I guess that's inherent in your occupation, in what you do, but a very impressive set of data, and so, I look forward to continuing to review that in the future. And, yeah, very impressive job.
Oh, thank you. And we're always happy to meet with you and dive a little deeper on any particular topic that is of interest, because it is a pretty dense amount of information.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Thank you, just one more, to also Commissioner Benson's point, and what I think I meant to also ask was, so, are we at that, with that, about 250 more? Would you say that we're now covering the need? Or is there, like, still waiting lists or places where we can't, where we would need even greater capacity to meet the need?
That's a really good question. I think the nature of the Crisis Center means that it's hard to know when you've reached saturation, because people keep coming in. It's emergency services in one way, but I think one way to look at that is to think about what we're seeing in terms of clinic capacity in the community, both us and others, and the ability for those ongoing continuum of services. And so, I think one place, and I know Casa de Salud was here earlier as well, one place that we've really been focusing, and so has the community, is on integrating behavioral health services with primary care, because that really gives us the ability to kind of expand that access in a way that meets it on a more steady-state basis, instead of only in the crisis situations.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, Commissioner Frank Baca is absolutely right. These reports are really informative and thorough, and you can get an incredible amount of information from these about what's happening in our community and what's happening at the hospital, of course, specifically. I want to especially appreciate the last, well, it's Appendix A, that really goes through the progress on the MOU, which, I was a little unsure, reading this last night, but this is the MOU related to the mill levy, so it's not related to the detention center. And, you know, it just spells out a lot of the different points in that MOU and where the hospital is as far as compliance with those portions. And I think it really points out a lot of very encouraging areas where things are going well, and a couple of areas that continue to need work, and the hospital's acknowledging that and showing a path forward for that, so I want to commend that. And one question that I did want to ask you, because it's come up several times in the past, is the issue of residents. And I've heard some things about action on that in the legislature, but can you speak at all to sort of current working conditions for residents and salaries and those kinds of things that have been brought to our attention before?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So, our residents are paid slightly above the 50th percentile for the national numbers. We use the national numbers for salaries. You will hear from other folks from time to time that they are below the 50th percentile using the Western Region numbers. We don't really consider the Western Region as a hospital to be comparable, because it includes California. And so, the wages and living expenses in California are significantly different, so we use the national average to try to get something that's a little more consistent. Resident work hours are actually set by the American Council on Graduate Medical Education, the ACGME, and so, they are limited to 80 hours per week. And I know that sounds crazy, but that actually was movement forward about 25 years ago compared to, residents used to have no limits whatsoever on their work hours. So, our residents are in a collective bargaining unit, and they bargain with us on things like leave time, pay time off, other benefits, including food and things like that. So, there's a variety of benefits that are provided through the collective bargaining agreement as well.
Appreciate that update very much. And then, the last thing is just a comment, maybe you want to comment on as well, but I've been hearing and reading about your plans for an expanded medical school. Not sure if that's directly related to the hospital itself, but I think that's definitely an exciting development for our community, and hope that our legislators up north are listening to that request and funding it at the end of the day.
Thank you. And actually, if you don't mind, it is directly related to the hospital, and the reason why is because clinical education for all the health professions, the medical school and all of the other health professions, requires clinical experiences to complete their training. And so, for a long time, the hospital was sort of at a steady-state capacity, and now, with the expansion and addition of the new critical care tower and the other spaces we've added, like the Crisis Center, like the new under-construction Children's Psychiatric Center, we have the capacity to expand those clinical education spaces. And so, that's enabled the medical school to move forward with a really ambitious plan to double in size, which is really exciting.
Very exciting stuff. Anything else from Commissioners? Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. I'm going to take this opportunity to read a couple of statements into the record, take a couple actions here on our closed meetings that we held earlier this afternoon. I offer the following statement regarding the closed meeting that was held Tuesday, January 28, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. Only those items described on the public notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on January 28, 2025, were discussed in the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement. Our members of this meeting.
I move to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Cheryl Levis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on a 5-0 vote. And then, the second statement I'll read, I move that the Burnley County attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, January 28, 2025, within the parameters set by this commission to include matters published in the closed meeting agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from the vice chair. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can I roll call vote?
Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Cheryl Levis?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Passes on a 5-0 vote. Now, we'll move to approval of our minutes. I make a motion to approve the January 9, 2025, special administrative meeting minutes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Barboia. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Cheryl Levis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Five to zero on that vote. And then, I will make a motion to approve the January 14, 2025, administrative meeting minutes. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Barboia. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Cheryl Levis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Passes on a 5-0 vote. And item seven is approval of our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for item 7D, 7I, and 7J?
Yes, Mr. Chair. For item 7D, AR 2025-8. 7I is AR 2025-9. 7J is AR 2025-10.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Sorry.
You have a second from Commissioner Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Chair Levis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that also passes on a 5-0 vote. Now, we'll move on to adoption of ordinance and amendments to county code. Our first item is item A, Finance. This will be a public hearing on the low-income property tax rebate pursuant to NMSA 7-2, and this is an item that I am proud to be sponsoring this evening. So, we will now convene a public hearing. Julianne, did anyone sign up to speak?
Mr. Chair, we have no sign-ups for this item.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. And then, we have Deputy County Manager Shirley Reagan to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Levis, Vice Chair Commissioners. My name is Shirley Reagan. I'm the Deputy County Manager for Finance, and I'm here to present the agenda item for the low-income property, excuse me, tax rebate program. So, the first item was to conduct a public hearing, and I guess there was no one here. So, the next portion is to, let me get my notes straight. I got them mixed up when I came down here. So, when this item was presented on January the 14th, and it was deferred until the 28th, we were asked to go back and put together, gather some more different information about the property tax rebate and the potential impact to the public and to the county. So, with that, we came back with that information now. I'm going to have Jenny come up and do the presentation, and then, I'll come back and talk about the action items.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Jenny Haaken. My name is Jenny Haken. I'm the Principal Financial Analyst for the Finance Division, and we have prepared a presentation based on the feedback from the last meeting on the low-income property So based on the feedback we received, we did take a look at Dona Anna County, which was probably closest in similarity to Burnley County as far as some demographics. So I'll go ahead and get right into it. The first slide you see before you is, it compares the demographics between the two counties. Just of note, Burnley County is about three times larger than Dona Anna. We have about 3.2 times more housing units. We have about 3.4 times more households, and the median value of the owner-occupied housing unit is about 31% higher than Dona Anna. Slide 2 gives some comparisons based on FRED. That stands for Federal Reserve Economic Data, and it shows the populations and homeownership differences between the two counties. Slide 3, we have some proposed estimates based on our analysis in the Finance Division. We took Dona Anna's percentage rates and applied them to Burnley County to see what the potential fiscal impacts could be. We did four different methodologies. The lowest method, based on our estimates, the lowest calculation or impact that it would have on the county is about 1.1 million, and the highest being about 4.1 million. The next slide is information from the Assessor's Office, and it has property tax information. So we did take a look at property tax information from the Assessor's Office for 29,730 properties in the year, tax year 2023. We looked at the appraised values for properties under $100,000, I'm sorry, from $0 to $100,000. So based on the information, we assessed that these properties may qualify for low-income property tax rebate, and using the tax rebate scale from the state statute, the estimated tax bill and the estimated annual tax rebate liability would be approximately 6.9 million. O'Donnell Economics and Strategy prepared an analysis and estimated that the cost to the county could be about 1.65 million annually. The next slide is just a summary that we presented at the January 14 meeting. This is a summary of the New Mexico Taxation and Revenue Department estimates, and this was prepared by their chief economist. And so this was presented before, but it ranges anywhere from about 3.9 million up to 13, it should be 15 million, right? Okay. There might be a typo that we need to, oh, I see it. It's the third line there, but 15.6 million would be the highest range based on their calculations. So we did a summary of all the methodologies based on the Finance Division's calculations, incorporating tax and rev, and also O'Donnell's Economics and Strategies calculation. So based on that, we took the lowest, which would be an estimated 1.1 million impact on the county, and then the highest being about 15.6 million.
And I stand for any questions.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harkin, again. Thank you all for the team for going back. Can I go back a few slides to, one more, one more. That one, so I just want to be clear with this 6 million, is this another way you're just trying to provide an estimate?
Yes, ma'am. In the past, when this item was brought to commission, we received information from the Assessor's Office, given property values, and based on the information that were received, we took an estimation. So you see the column that says tax rebate scale?
Yes.
Based on that, the calculation was that the estimated average bill for that portion would be $90, and then you take that and multiply it across, based on their average net taxable value. So that would be a liability of about 720,000 to the county. And then going down through the scale, the highest property value being 100,000, about 35% of, based on the tax rebate scale, about 35% times the average tax bill would be about a 2.7 million. So when you add all those together, that's how the 6.9 came about.
Okay. Okay. And then, thank you so much for that. And then I think this is the one, the last one to me that isn't taking a guess, I think. Can you go to the next slide?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe one more. So these are the slides we saw before, which I just have an issue with seeing that, right? These are the same numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just that we're not, sort of, some of these are feel like big guesses for me, right? Because we're not, we're just estimating how many property owners would actually be eligible, and if they would even go for it, and what their estimate tax rebate would be.
Yes, ma'am. Tax and Rev did provide that analysis for us, and they did several different methodologies. The first being they took an average rebate of $300 per property, or per tax filer. And then, so on that, the lowest, on that was 3.9 million. And then they accounted for the maximum, just to show what the maximum could be potentially. So that's where the 15 million came in, and that was with the maximum rebate per person of $350.
Yeah, I think these are just harder to prove for me because they don't, because I guess, but thank you for doing that for the, if we could look one more time at, or maybe keep up the Dona Anna.
Yes, ma'am. So you want to go back to this one?
The Dona, yes. Thank you. So, and just so I'm understanding, your estimates here are multiplying it to weigh in for population?
Correct. So we took a look at what Dona Anna's participation rate was. Based on their population, their participation rate was 0.59%.
So less than 1%?
Yes, ma'am.
Of their population that is eligible actually asks for the rebate?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And they're still paying out this 371,000? Is that with the 300?
Yes.
Okay. And this is also based on a less, yeah, it's 0.59%. Okay. I mean, I think this feels like the closest, you know, as we have to estimate, because we don't know yet. So thank you so much for doing this work to get here. I know it was a lot of work. Thank you so much.
I didn't work along.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to point out, and then I'll go to Commissioner Benson here, I want to point out the alignment between really all three of these methods, but in particular the first three methods, with the independent analysis that we received from O'Donnell Economics. They're all in the same range roughly, and I think based on, I don't really understand where those NM tax and rev numbers came from. I mean, it just kind of seemed like they pulled a percentage out of somewhere and then, you know, kind of multiplied that across more, it was, it's very hard to follow. I think they're trying to do their best to help, but I feel like this is applied at a more detailed level, that you guys just did an amazing job of coming across, coming out with something that is really based on our sister county, our closest sister county. So I really appreciate this and think you guys did a great job of condensing this into something that's manageable. So, did you want to say something, DCM Reagan, or I'll go to Commissioner Benson?
I was just going to validate what you were saying or concur with what you're saying and add that tax and rev, what they did is they use actual tax returns from 2023, because this rebate doesn't occur on your property tax bill. As you know, it's on their income tax filings. So they looked at the number of tax returns that fell into that category, and there's a sliding scale depending on ranges of your, where your modified gross income. So it doesn't necessarily mean that, it could be somebody that started out at $60,000, and by the time they took all the deductions, their modified gross income would fall into that. So I think that's what makes it difficult to put an exact number on it, because it's an after-the-fact calculation. Once the tax and rev collects or pays out all the taxes, they will bill the county in November. So for instance, for '24, if this was in place now, 24 tax returns are due by April 15th, and they work on those, and then they have amended, a timeframe for amended returns, then they will calculate and bill the county in November for the 24 rebates that they paid out. So each year, that's kind of the cycle. So it does make it hard, and depending on what they, what average or what calculation you use, there is a large range. So you're right.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DCM Reagan, that's exactly the information we were talking about. So well done to you and your team. Thank you. Please thank the New Mexico Tax and Rev for us, because they didn't have to do this. Especially not this quick. And thank you, County Manager. I don't, it seems like, you know, like a Sisyphean feat to get this done, so thank you so much. And this gives us real numbers, that now it's not just speculation. At least now we have real numbers. Whether it's accurate in the rollout, that's a different question. I want to point out, though, that we would be liable for 100% of the tax rebates, whether they're filed for or not. So Commissioner Barboa makes a good point, that there may be a lot of people who don't do it, but that's not our responsibility. I mean, we should actually take responsibility to encourage that, but let's say they just refuse and they don't. That doesn't matter in terms of our liability. We, it's, that's money that is owed to somebody else whether they file for it or not, so we should be cautious. Whether or not they, we hit 100% of that number or not, we could, and we would owe it. But I do have a question. Why is, and this, again, this is more of a speculative question, but why is Dona Anna so low in their participation rate? Is there any conjecture on why it's so low? Because my thought is the Dona Anna residents are being overtaxed. And so there's a failure in communication somewhere. If there's 99% of the population who could apply for this tax rebate aren't getting it, they're paying too much in taxes, and they shouldn't do that. So why is it, why is it so low?
Hello, Commissioner Benson and Chair Levis. Thank you. I think, and without knowing for sure, we did get some data from Dona Anna. I think a lot of it may be outreach, if the public is aware of it. There's also the fact that Burnley County's median house price is a lot higher than Dona Anna, so their rebates are going to be a little bit lower than what we might see. But as far as, you know, I think, and they just implemented this, so it could grow as it, as years go on.
When did they implement it?
It was 2023.
So this was their first year of participation?
Correct.
Okay, well, that helps.
Yes.
That helps. Okay. I just think, before we get in conversations about what the financial impact, we should consider what 100% of the financial impact would be, because that's what we would owe the taxpayers, whether they take advantage of it or not. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Dr. Kelly O'Donnell, who is on the call now on the Zoom. Dr. O'Donnell has 25 years' experience in New Mexico Public Finance, including being the Director of the Tax Policy for the state. And I asked her to write the opinion that we have shared with all of you, and so I invited her to the meeting, and I think she has a great wealth of knowledge and experience to share with us. So if I may, Dr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Kelly O'Donnell. I am an economist here in New Mexico. I have been working in government or as a consultant to government for over 25 years on issues of fiscal policy in particular. I started my career at the Tax Department as a senior economist, was there for a number of years, came back to the Tax Department as Deputy Secretary in Charge of Tax Policy. And so I ran the tax information shop at Tax for a couple of years before I moved on to economic development. I have been a professor of public finance as well, and I have a great deal of experience with the New Mexico system of low-income tax credits and rebates, because, and I'm dating myself now, I wrote my dissertation on them about 25 years ago. I have, so I can speak very directly to some of the questions that have been raised, both about the fiscal impact, but also the question that was raised about participation in Dona Anna County. One thing that folks may not be aware of is that New Mexico has been at the forefront of low-income rebates administered through the personal income tax system. We've been doing it since the 70s, and we have, as consequently, we in fact have a very, very high rate of participation by very low-income people. Now, the low-income rebates, and the rebate that we're talking about today is one of a large collection of rebates, in fact, that are mostly paid for by the state, are available only to very low-income people. There was some misinformation about, or not misinformation, confusion about deductions and what modified gross income means. The income upon which these credits is based is comprehensive income, and that means it's earnings, it's social security benefits, it's VA benefits, it's TANF, it's all sorts, it's SNAP. It's all of these sources of income that don't generally get reflected in taxes. So if you have a modified gross income of $24,000, you have very little money. That's all the money in the world you have, and it's not just you, the taxpayers' money, it's all the money that your household has available. So the reason that the participation rate in Dona Anna County is so low is because there really aren't that many people who are that poor and own a home, so, and upon which they have any meaningful tax burden. So that's, that's why the participation rate is so low. It's not that people aren't filing returns, it's that most people, the vast majority of New Mexicans, don't qualify for these rebates because they are not poor enough. And that is something I'm intimately familiar with, because I've analyzed that data in great detail, so I'm not speculating about this. In addition, the data I used to develop my estimate was published by the Taxation and Revenue Department. I think one thing we economists who have worked in fiscal policy and budgeting in New Mexico, or anywhere, know, is that the best predictor of what's to come is what has already happened, right? So we, the property tax rebate has been on the books since the 90s. Dona Anna adopted it just a year or two ago, but Santa Fe adopted it a number of years ago, and Los Alamos as well. And so we know from watching the data and watching these returns come in, this is actual data, not speculative, not an estimate, real data collected by the Tax Department, we know from watching this over the years that there aren't enormous spikes, right? When a county comes into the group, the tax expenditure, the amount that's going out the door in tax rebates rises roughly in proportion to the number of poor people in that county. We saw that when Dona Anna County came into the pool, the cost jumped by about 70%, and that's because the pool of poor people who were eligible for the rebate increased by about 70%. So I think it's, you know, when you have real data reported over a long period of time by a decently sized population of people, you have an excellent basis upon which to form an estimate. You don't have to speculate wildly about what could happen, because you have a really good idea of what will happen. Now, there's always a chance that something strange will happen, but again, we have data going back to the 90s on this. And we know, looking at the data, that the average rebate that folks are getting is $300. We know, and the maximum is $350. So I think that, based on the real data that was, that is published by the Taxation and Revenue Department and posted online in the form of a tax expenditure report every year, we know what this is going to cost Burnley County. It's going to be, and my estimate is high because I'm an economist and I always overestimate things because I'm conservative. It probably, I called it at about 1.65 million a year, probably going to be less than that, frankly. But I would, I would, I would be very, very surprised if it came to more than $2 million. The people who are going to apply It, the people who are going to apply for this credit are already in the system, receiving the other low-income credits that are available to low-income people in New Mexico. There's not going to be a surge of new filings. Those people are already in the system, receiving benefits through the tax system. I, I'm more than happy to answer any other questions about this rebate. Or, you know, if there were some questions I know that were raised about how this might interact with the constitutional amendments that, that were passed. And so I'd be more than happy to stand for questions. Thank you.
I believe Vice Chair Barboia had a question.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. I really appreciate this information. I, I'm even more moved to believe, and I wonder if you have information on this. Because of being a person of low income for most of my life, I'm like, you don't own a home. If you're a young person or young family, you're not owning a home, you're renting, you're living off others. And so my biggest assumption that people who do benefit from this are largely elders and people that are, own their home and they're, don't make any, as much money anymore. And is that, would you say that's correct, or do you have data on that?
Yeah, Commissioner Barboia, yeah, I, I agree with that completely. A lot of these folks are, are, you know, single elderly people receiving the minimum social security benefit, stuff like that. They're, they're very low income, and they own their home because they've been in it for fifty years.
Thank you so much, Ms. O'Donnell.
Other questions for Ms. O'Donnell? I, I guess I just kind of have a, Commissioner Baca, were you, were you finished? Do you have further questions?
Well, the last thing I, I would say, I want to thank Dr. O'Donnell for being here, for, for providing this insight. I think it is really helpful to us, extremely helpful. I do just want to reiterate that this, this is helping the, the lowest of low-income folks in our community that are homeowners. We're talking about the need for more housing. What this rebate could do is keep people in their homes. It could keep, you know, older homes that are going to be passed down from older residents to their, the next generation. It'll keep them in the family because they will have a little bit more assistance in, in that with the, with the property tax rebate. So I just think we also need to focus on who this is helping and what our, what our aim here is too. So thank you, really appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. And, and yes, Dr. O'Donnell, really appreciate you being here and, and sharing that with us and sharing your, your work and all your expertise to, to help us. And I think, like I said earlier, between your analysis and our staff analysis, I feel personally very confident around, you know, where these numbers will, will congeal ultimately. But really, I just want to make a statement that, you know, this commission has had incredible resources available to it over the last two years, just that I've been on here, making huge investments in public safety. We've had the, the, we may not right now at this moment, but we have had the highest-paid Sheriff's Department, law enforcement deputies in the state, and we, we continue to battle that out. But we're, you know, number one or number two, and that's because of the resources this commission has put into that. We've doubled our mobile crisis teams in our Sheriff's Department. We've doubled our, our fire mobile crisis teams. We've increased pay for our, our workers across the board, for firefighters. We've expanded our providers at the CARES campus and increased salaries there. We have made investments in water infrastructure. We've made investments in affordable housing. We continue to abate billions of dollars in future taxes to incentivize corporations, usually large out-of-state corporations, to come into New Mexico and bring their jobs here. This commission has made tremendous resources available to a broad swath of our community. Like I said, from people that work for the county, people that expect to be safe in the county, or people that want to work in the county and want to build jobs in the county. And this is an opportunity for us to do something that we've never done, which is cut taxes. And cut taxes for a portion of our population that is struggling. And, and that is really an understatement. I mean, the, you know, you look at the price of eggs right now. You look at the price of rents have doubled. Now, I realize these are not people that are renting. The cost of mortgages, right? Percentage points on mortgage interest, you know, doubled, tripled just in the last couple of years. Credit card interest, homeowner's insurance, repairs to your home. Any of these things have just, the costs have escalated catastrophically over the last couple of years. And they look like they're only going to get worse in the next four years, not better. So this is an opportunity for us to actually make some of the county's resources available to those people who are struggling to afford daily life. And, and we have the ability to do that. I have great confidence that this is very narrowly tailored to, you know, it's kind of a, a dirty word, but a progressive income tax system is, is what we are talking about here. And this modified gross adjusted income is, is the heart of that. So we're talking about targeting relief to families in our community that have invested their life savings here. Whether it's a, a single working mom, or as, as we've described, it's probably an elder that has worked in our community, raised their family in our community, and owns their home. No matter what, these are people that have invested in, in this place. They care about this community. And so this is an opportunity for us to say that we care about them and that, that we're willing to invest in them, just as we're willing to invest in our police, just as we're willing to invest in out-of-state corporations that want to bring jobs here. So I am even more motivated to support this now, just after hearing the conversation, listening to our staff and Dr. O'Donnell. So I want to make sure that we get the process right here before, before I say anything. So I know that DCM Reagan was going to go through sort of the, the potential options before us here as, as we move forward to that.
Thank you, Chair Olivas. I just wanted to point out again, we did use actual data from census and different things like that. So the next steps here, and I agree, this is good for our community. The next steps, we already have conducted the public hearing. So what we need to do now is you will have the opportunity to introduce for discussion and possible adoption of a low-income property tax rebate ordinance. And you were handed out a draft ordinance that we need some items filled in on, like what tax year we want to start with, and then there's two other questions. So we have Ken here, as well as Myra is on the, on Zoom. I'm going to bring up the, the actual ordinance so that, you have one in front of you, but everybody can see what will be. So the first, the first item that needs to be looked at is what tax years in which the rebate applies. Because that would be the start. And what our notes here say, we need a decision from you all on when to begin the implementation. So for this first one here would be what tax year?
So, DCM Reagan, so for the implementation date, you know, we just began the, the 2025 tax year. Is that an option as far as when this can begin? Granted, it's in some sense retroactive, but.
Yes.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Barboia.
Does hear, Chair, thank you. And the comment says, sure, election results can be certified no later than July first of the first tax year in which the rebate is imposed. So assuming we have, we can get this on the general election. I wouldn't want to move for a special election, right? But so assuming we can get that on this general election. Yeah, just thinking through that, do we need to?
So, Commissioner, Madam Vice Chair, if I may. So the, the proposal before us gives the option to submit a question to voters to approve a tax increase. Now, I haven't made a motion yet, but I would just say I would not support a motion that required voter approval of a tax increase. So in other words, if we didn't do a tax increase, I don't believe that subsequent language would apply.
Okay, thank you.
Am I on the right path there, DCM?
Yes. Chair Olivas, Vice Chair Barboia, that's what I was going to say, is that, that's the second portion. The ordinance has to be adopted tonight, and then it has to go into effect thirty days after adoption per the statute. So that was why, when it was put together, it gives you that option, as you said, to ask the voters if they would be willing to enact a tax. And if they were, and it passed, and after you, if that was your choice to take it before the voters, then that would dictate a slightly different timeframe because, based on the next election that would occur. But tonight, you can set when you want it to start. And then Legal is working on the, finalizing the final format of the draft, of the ordinance so that we can move it forward based on the decisions that you all make.
Thank you, understood.
So is there any, any consensus on a, on a start year? I, I mean, my thoughts would be as soon as possible.
I guess I would contend, I, I feel good about as soon as possible. And/or I think, you know, naming 2026 would be helpful to be able to get, like we said, we have to, you know, liable in our budgets and plan for it, even the maximum, even if we don't expect to spend that. Others?
Commissioner Benson? Oh, your mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also, if this were to pass, this would be a, a cut to our revenue on our budget. So what would the, where would this be offset? Unless we increase tax revenue, not by raising taxes, but possibly economic development, which I would love to see. But could you kind of give us some perspective on that?
I'll defer to County Manager.
I'm just going to weigh in on this, this because part of the reason that the, the statute allows us to add the, the tax, and I'm sure that was in different communities, not understanding exactly what the impact would be, so they would have that flexibility. I think honestly, we don't know the answer to that. And I, and if, in fact, the, it does go into 2026 as part of our budget discussions, we'd be bringing you options for this and other tax rebates that are going to be coming our way. But, so this is one. The other thing I'll just add is, as you know, President Trump asked for a pause on federal subventions as well to local governments. And so I think we have, we have a lot of moving parts. What I will say is that I, I do think that I'm very confident in, both in the commission and the staff, to be able to bring you options as part of the budget process that will allow us to take this action if the commission should choose to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I believe that this discussion has really shown that we're not talking about the, the really large impact to the budget of the $15 million. I, I feel very confident that it's more at the 1.6 million with, with what I have heard and what I have seen from both reviews this evening. I feel that, you know, now is the time to do this. The community, we have had the opportunity since 1994 to enact this low-income tax rebate, and we've talked about it quite a lot. I, I believe that it is time now. So I don't want to put us in, into any kind of harms way or anything like that. But I believe that we can find $1.6 million in our Burnley County budget. And I, I respectfully, you know, will work and understand what the, what the county manager is talking about. But, but this is a policy decision based on the need of our community that our chair so eloquently addressed, and I think the need is now. So that would be, I, I, I'm not in favor of a, of a tax increase to cover this. I think that we can work this into our budget and make the decision now and be very mindful as we move forward in the next few years budgeting. So that, that's my position on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Any other commissioners wishing to weigh in here?
Well, I mean.
Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of the, of the general proposal, notwithstanding the budget considerations. You know, I guess my, my first thought would be to delay it a year to 2016 to give us some time to absorb and to, you know, to analyze, continue to analyze the data and prepare for it. Again, that's my instinct. I wouldn't be adverse or upset if it was to go to immediate impact, to be honest with you, because for the reasons stated. So, yeah, I guess I'm kind of on the fence of that, but I would be, I would definitely be, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to delaying it for one year.
All right, so this is a, a board, and we can vote on things. So I think the way to settle this is to, to do votes. So I will make a motion for the tax year to be 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
I just have one, yes, I, I just have one last comment to, to my primo Baca over there on the end of the dais. We have, we have really analyzed this quite a lot. Prior to us sitting in our seats for the last, you know, many, many years, we've seen that it is working in Santa Fe and Doña Ana. And I think that time is now to act because I, I feel that our, our constituents are deserving on this, of this. This is, this is our honest homeowners at the very lowest income. And if we can't see to support them in this time of great need, I, I, I think that that, that is problematic. So I, I really encourage everyone to, to dig deep, and I, I think that the time is now. So thank you for, for that.
And I just want to say before the vote here real quick, you know, no pressure. Again, I, I, as Commissioner Baca said, I, I think I could live with, with either one of these. But, you know, I'm making the motion for 25, see where that goes, and then, you know, we'll see if we need another motion after that. Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank, again, the, the Finance Department, County Manager, Ms. Dr. O'Donnell also for the analysis. But this has been the first real data that's been presented. We've had, since I've been on the commission, we've had a lot of debate to Commissioner Baca's point. But it has not been backed by data. The Doña Ana has really only have one tax year of evidence, and that's the closest one to our county. I would advocate 2026. And, but I do recognize the, the need here. I applaud it. You know, it'd be great if we could also benefit the low-income renters who don't get any kind of benefits. So these are asset holders, but, but again, if, if they're, you know, elderly and they, this is their only asset, and it's, it's slipping away because taxes keep rising faster than their income, fixed income. I, you know, I see the value. But just out of caution, I would encourage 2026. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Did I see any, do I need any discussion from County Legal or County Manager? I saw some.
I was just, uh, the, this is going to be a motion to publish for final action, so there's some time to think about it. I, I do have a little bit of a concern. I'd like to talk to some of the tax specialists. This is a low-income property tax rebate that goes on to your income tax, right? So if we come back in February eleventh, some people may have filed already for the income tax. So in other words, we may be enacting a rebate that will not have been available for filers already filing, which means that they would have to do an amended return. Shirley knows way more about it than I do. But I think 2026 may be cleaner just on that question. But I do defer to the commission on it. But it, and it could be that we're going to fill in some blanks here, publish it, and come back to enact on it. We'll have a better idea. But I, I am a little concerned about the fact that it's a income tax rebate, and we'll be working in February when some people have already filed.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. And to be clear, I'm talking about the 2025 tax year, not the fiscal year, because I think we're, we're speaking in two languages here in government. We're thinking of the fiscal year. I'm talking about the 2025 tax year, which is the calendar year, right, that just started. So you wouldn't file those taxes until a year from now, essentially, right?
Right.
So this would be for next year.
That's greater clarity for me as well. I. I.
Uh, let me, let me see, uh, Dr. O'Donnell and Commissioner Baca had raised their hands, and then we'll go to Vice Chair.
Go ahead, Dr. O'Donnell.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I was just gonna make the point you just made, that it's the 2025 tax year, which we'll be filing for next year in 2026. So you can make it effective for this year. It, it won't happen till next year.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chair, uh, I might add also that the state administers this, so they would be the one making all the changes and updating their forms once they received our ordinance that we were on board to provide the rebate.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. That brings big clarity for me. I was understanding it is now, and it may be retroactive, so thank you. And, um, that, I, I did hear that, um, the note about, like, we will have to reserve somewhat of, um, what could be the possible, since we don't have real da- you know, that total data, sounds like the highest was around 5 million, 6 million, um, that we budget for, um, just making that note. Even, I, I hugely expect for it to be more closer to this 1.5, 1.6 million, if even that. And, and I just think about the outreach that takes to even get people aware. Um, so I'm glad to think of that. It's not until the 25 tax year. So thank you for that clarity that, um, that sways my support more.
All right. Commissioner Frank Baca, and then we're gonna close the floor and vote on this.
Just one question, given, uh, County Attorney, um, Martinez's, uh, comments, are we actually voting on the date, or are we just voting to publish? Is there a date even necessary at this point in time, that, number one? And number two, given the fact that the filing will not be until 2026, thank you for the clarification, uh, Chair, and I would support the, the motion, given the, just the answer to, um, Attorney, uh, Martinez.
Uh, I think that's a good point, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, Vice Chair members. And just looking at our agenda to make sure how it's published, we're gonna be voting to publish this for a vote later on, which of course is subject to amendment, which makes me feel good, because we'll have to check with the state about the implementation issues. I think it can all be done, but we wanna make sure. So we may come to you, even with a date in here of 2025, make, come and say there's recommendations that it be 2026. I don't know. We're looking at similar issues on the, uh, veterans' tax issue, but we can certainly look at that, because I think it'll be subject to amendment at that time, is the way I understand it. So, uh, we can come back and do that. And then I, of course, there are other items that would probably have to be amended on this draft, which is just a draft. So I hope that's answering the question.
All right. We'll call the question. This is just for the question of 2025. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
No.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that passes on a four-to-one vote, uh, setting the tax year. So we're making some progress here on, on filling this out. Um, DCM Reagan, I don't know if you wanna guide us here, the, the next question, which I think I heard some consensus here is about submitting to voters, uh, a tax increase essentially to fund this.
Correct. So with the 2025, that'll affect the FY '26 budget. Um, and so the next, uh, question would be the submission of a question to voters is what you would need to vote on, whether they would, um, allow the low-income tax property rebate to be funded with a new, uh, property tax rate of up to $1 per $1,000 of taxable, um, value of property.
Uh, so from the commission, does anyone have a, a desire to have this in there? I do not support this. I don't believe that we need, uh, a tax increase in order to fund this relatively small outlay. Commissioner Benson?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanna say, uh, no, I do not, uh, want to vote for a tax increase. However, I will say I hope we can increase our tax base by increasing our population and business growth. Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner Benson. Uh, Commissioner Baca. Barbara Baca.
Um, I, I, I do not feel that this motion would be necessary to increase taxes. Uh, I think that, um, I would not support that, and I think that, um, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So to our parliamentarian here, do we need to vote to take this out of here, or can we just? Sorry, Julianne. Uh, do we need to vote to take this out of here, or can we just, you know, there seems to be a consensus here that this is not necessary?
So if it was in the published version, um, to be published for the next couple of weeks, and yeah, it should be voted on to be approved?
Vote to take it out. Okay. Uh, so I would make an amendment to strike Section C.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Benson. Any further discussion to strike Section C? Seeing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on a five-zero vote, so that section is removed. And then it looks like basically the last section that we need to decide on, uh, would be a repeal of this. Um, and DCM Reagan, can you, can you go through that? So since we are not making anything contingent on voter approval, um, what's your recommendation on that section?
So the, if the, the first, it says repeal of the low-income property tax rebate shall be accomplished upon either the decision of the voters, and because C was not approved, that's out, um, to not fund the rebate or by a duly adopted county ordinance. Um, so I th- I'll defer to county legal, but I think the, the latter part, from my understanding when talking, is that you could leave that repeal section in, that if something happened, you would have the opportunity to repeal, but that's also, an ordinance could be brought back to be repealed, so it would work either way, as, as in my conversations with Myra and Ken, but I just have Ken veri- verify that.
So I believe.
So it could be that would need to be struck, struck in as well.
So I believe if we struck from, uh, in Section D, if we struck from upon through by, so we remove upon either the decision of the voters to not fund the rebate. So the, the new section would read repeal of the low-income property tax rebate shall be accomplished by a duly adopted county ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
I'll move that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Baca.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, is that, uh, my question is, is that necessary? We have the opportunity to repeal any, um, I mean, it, that's a statement of the obvious, right? We can repeal, um, anything with the majority vote. Is it necessary, is my question?
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. I think that's a good point. I'll let county legal or...
I, uh, either one works, I do think, uh, for clarity purpose, since it's gonna be published. It may lead to some confusion that there's a built-in repeal, um, that was meant for the event a tax increase didn't occur. So I think a lot of people going, wait, is there a tax increase, not a crease? So I, I, I think on a legal side, either wordage could work as amended, but I also worry about the clarity of it being published with a re- repeal be built into it, which would otherwise be available by a majority of the board.
Okay. So I would, uh, i- if my secondary is open to it, uh, I would revise my motion to just strike the whole Section D.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barboah, since she was the first one. Uh, any further discussion on this amendment? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I think that gets us a document. I think we've answered all the questions. Yeah, there you go. Uh, any further discussion or, uh, debate on this? And of course, this is to publish it, so we do have the opportunity to solicit additional feedback from staff, county legal, commissioners, and the public, of course, and, and we can further amend this if needed.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, because the to- our timeline is different than, than what's in the ordinance, the state statute, um, excuse me, uh, it has to be, um, done within 30 days, the published, finalized, the final ordinance.
Okay.
So it's a shorter timeframe, so it would be at the March 11th meeting, that we would be bringing that back, as opposed to, you know, the normal full 30.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, it would be February 11th, we would be bringing it back.
Okay. February 11th.
February, oh, what did I say?
You said.
I meant February, I'm sorry. No wonder you were looking at me strange.
Seeing no further discussion, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
All right.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five-to-zero vote. Thank you so much to our staff and to Dr. O'Donnell, who, uh, got us all this great information on this, and, uh, we'll finish this up next month. All right. Uh, getting my bearings here, we are now gonna move to another finance item. This is gonna be adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of our general obligation bonds. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, item 8B is ordinance 2025-dash-nine.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now convene a public hearing. Did anyone sign up to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no sign-ups for this item.
Thank you very much, Julianne. Uh, and with that, uh, we have our Finance Division to present.
Hello. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Jenny Hayken, the Principal Financial Analyst, Analyst for the Finance Division. On December 10th, the commission approved the publication of the notice intent, of intent to adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the Bernalio County, New Mexico, General Obligation Bond Series 2025, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $31,630,000. The notice has been published for the required 30 days. The parameter, parameters ordinance sets the terms of the bonds, including the financing terms, and the bonds must be sold in adherence with such parameters. Proceeds from this sale will be used for roads, storm drain, parks and recreation, public safety, facilities, public housing, fleet and heavy equipment, and the library. The county has completed the rating agency presentations with Fitch, Moody's, and Standard and Poor's on January 16th, 2025, with ratings expected in mid-February. Um, interest rates on the bonds will be determined via a competitive sale process. Bids will be scheduled through the Grant Street Auction Electronic Website on or after February 25th, 2025. Excuse me. The county will have approximately 30 days to finalize the sale. Final interest rates will be provided at the next scheduled Bernalio County Commission Administrative Meeting, following the closing of the sale. Property tax revenue projections are adequate to fund the sale with no increase in the current, uh, bond debt service rate of 1.624. I'm sorry, 1.264, excuse me. Um, the Finance Division is recommending approval to adopt the ordinance for the Bernalio County, New Mexico, General Obligation Bond Series 2025. Um, we also have our Bond Council here, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Do we have a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Baca. I will second. Uh, any discussion on this ordinance for issuance of our GO bonds? Just wanna say, these are a really important way that we fund a lot of good projects in the county, a lot of infrastructure and, and good things, so appreciate your work. Thank you, Ms. Sweeney, for being here. Um, seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on a five-zero vote. Thank you. Uh, okay. The next item is item 9A. Uh, this is a mo- a motion that I'm sponsoring, uh, to adopt a resolution requesting, uh, cumulative fund balance detail. Uh, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, and then I'll, I'll, uh, talk a little bit more about it. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you.
Can I have a number for it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself here. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please provide a resolution number?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Item 9A is AR 2025-dash-11.
And actually, I think we can go through this whole, uh, section for the.
Okay.
Of three of those, four of those items.
So item 9A was AR 2025-dash-11. Item 9B1 is FR 2025-dash-12. Item 9B2 is FR 2025-dash-13. Item 9B3 is FR 2025-dash-14. And item 9B4 is FR 2025-dash-15.
Actually, you can keep going. I, I think.
Happy to, Mr. Chair. Item 9C is AR 2025-dash-16. Item 9D is AR 2025-dash-17.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
All right. Back to where we started, uh, we had a motion and a second from the Vice Chair on this request for cumulative fund balance detail, and, uh, I, I won't take a whole lot of time on this. Um, the intent of this really is just to, uh, I, I think all of us at various times throughout the, the years here have, have gotten kind of updates on what our fund balance is, uh, what those various funds are reserved for, um, different things like our state-mandated reserves, and then we've got, you know, funds that are set aside for different projects, uh, projects that may have been committed by the commission, uh, and in other cases, they may have been projects that were, you know, requested by, um, county staff or other elected officials, you know, the sheriff, the clerk, of various different projects. Um, and so really, all this is asking is for us as a commission to, uh, get an update from our county manager and designated staff to, uh, tell us what our fund balance picture is and, uh, why it is that way, so that particularly as we move into budget season, we have a, a very clear idea of what our reserves look like. You know, we're, we're seeing, uh, troubling things, to say the least, out of, uh, out of Washington with, you know, funds being frozen and shifted and changed. So I think it's more important now than ever to really have a good picture of what our reserves look like and why they're there. Um, and, you know, I'm in, I'm in no way putting my, you know, finger on the scale for what we should do after that. I just think it's important that we have that conversation and get that report so that we can make informed decisions going forward. So I'll stand for any questions. All right? Oh, yes, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I, thank you for this. It's, um, definitely always what I wanted to see, and, um, I, I, I really applaud these efforts so that, um, both transparency publicly, which is hugely needed, and for our own, um, information as we prepare for possible, um, you know, places where we'll need funding, um, given the current administration and some of our funds. So thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any further discussion here? Commissioner Frank Baca?
I made just a question. Is there a timeline, and are, is it analyzed, or just, just wondering the logistics for...
Thank you. Very good question, Commissioner, uh, Frank Baca. Um, I should know this off the top of my head, but working with staff, we did change the date, and so, uh, let me see if I can jump in here real quickly and find that, but I believe it's the first meeting in March.
Yeah.
March 11th.
It's the March 11th. That's where I was getting mixed up with the other one.
There you go. See, you had the right date for something. Thank you so much. So March 11th, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Thank you.
To his question, is it analyzed? To his question, is it analyzed, like that's every year?
Uh, and, and Madam Vice Chair, no, this wasn't contemplated to be a, a recurring thing, this was really because the fund balance is kind of a, you know, a snapshot in time, um, you know, that may be something that we want to consider when, when this comes back, I hadn't thought of it in that way, but, um, that's always an option for, for future, I guess, or, or if you want to amend it now, I, I don't care.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that passes on a five-zero vote, and then I think this is our last finance item this evening, uh, we have fiscal year twenty-five, second quarter budget reconciliation, and Deputy County Manager Reagan to present.
Good evening, here I am again, um, Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager for Finance, I'm here to present the FY twenty-five, uh, second quarter budget reconciliation agenda item. We use these agendas to true up our budget during the year, once approved in April, it's executed starting July one of each year, and if there's changes, grants come in, different things like that, we have to true that up in order to spend those dollars. So, um, we work with departments to pull the information, the first item is, at the end of each, uh, fiscal year, once the actuarial is finished, the interest allocation is done. The first one is the interest allocation to the GOBonds in the amount of one million four hundred twenty-eight thousand, two ninety-nine, twenty, and that money will be divided amongst the, the purpose of the bonds that were issued. Uh, we also had the luxury of financing because of our bond rating at a lower rate than, and that we were earning interest at a higher rate, when you do that, you have to pay that back to the IRS, so we do that through our debt service fund, it's called a liability, so we, um, pull some of that funding out to fund that, so we didn't have to take away from projects, but the rest will go to the project, so if that is approved, then we will, line item transfer that budget over into the appropriate, uh, buckets for those GOBonds. The second one is budgeting the interest that we received on the, um, American Rescue Plan, uh, Fund Act, uh, the US Department of Treasury didn't require that we put those interest dollars into the ARPA fund, which would have made them very restrictive, so we moved them to the general fund, and it's based on the unspent dollars, and because those project dollars are based on, uh, capital projects that have a two to three-year timeframe, there was a, we're only expended right now about forty-five percent of the hundred and thirty-two million, so that's what the interest was earning on, so we're, uh, asking to move that over to the general fund. The third item is to, um, we received some money from DFA, um, technical services to be used on road projects, so they gave us that money back, so we have to accept and budget it so that they can put it on road projects, so that's the other piece, and that is for one million, three hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred dollars and forty-nine cents. The last piece is we're, with the, um, the MDC Healthcare Authority, uh, we are, the contract is with University of New Mexico Hospital, UNMH, and so, as we were working through the, all the costs for, um, FY twenty-four going into twenty-five, there were some cost overruns based on, um, we had risk insurance, we had, um, just increases in cost of nursing and different, uh, staffing levels that we had to do in meeting McLendon, so with that, we ended up not having to pay the full original five million dollars for the risk insurance, so we had, that saved some money there, we were still short, so we then, um, looked at the Healthcare GRT, which is a, one of the funding sources for the medical contract at MDC, and we're going to do, asking for a, a fund balance appropriation of two million, um, one hundred twenty dollars, three thirty-five and thirty-eight cents to fill that gap. And the last, um, motion is to authorize the county manager or the designee pursuant to administrative resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-seven to seek reimbursement to the general fund for any project or initiative funded by the general fund that subsequently receives grant funding, um, or some, or some other sort of funding. If the amount exceeds the county manager's authority, the item will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Deputy County Manager Reagan, do we have any questions? Vice Chair Barboah?
Definitely have questions, thank you, I just thank you always for helping me understand these, um, Ms. Shirley Reagan, I, Deputy County Manager Reagan, I, um, so this, uh, well, first, my first question, I guess, is, um, question number five, to seek reimbursement to the general fund, is that it particular for these four, items one through four, or is it in, these are for, is that particular to items one through four?
It's our standard practice, we actively pursue grants and other funding sources, but sometimes because of the project timeline, we might use general funds, so we're saying if, if I had Project A and I used general fund, but I had applied for a grant from, um, the federal government, the grant comes in, then I would use those dollars to pay back the general fund, to keep it hold.
And, and, I, I mean, I imagine that's what happens, but this is just giving the county manager allowing to do that, and are you saying?
There's an, there's an administrative resolution that you guys have already passed that gives that, all we're doing is just saying we want to be able to act on behalf, utilizing that administrative.
For these four items, particularly?
For these, yes.
Okay, and then for these four items, can you, um, the, these are all, um, like for number two, the interest of ARPA funds, there's still four mil, over four million, is that encumbered, I was told that, right, that we had to have those things like planned encumbered by December of twenty-four?
The interest was never posted to the ARPA fund, and it was not a part of the hundred and thirty-one point nine million dollars, but we, based on, um, US Treasury rules and guidelines, we were able, we had the opportunity to invest those unspent funds in any, in interest-bearing accounts, which is what we do, and you heard the Treasurer talk about that, now that that interest is there, it's, it just needs to be appropriated and moved into the general fund.
Okay, I mean, and so then it won't have like any of those ARPA requirements tied to it, okay, great, and, and that is true for the, uh, these other three funds as well, they've been somehow over or, um, in excess, and we're going to pull them back into the interest of Capital Construction Fund?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Deputy County Manager.
Any other questions or discussion on this? I guess I just have one, uh, about the, the MDC costs, um, you know, I think it's, it's really important, we have a great provider onsite there now, I think somebody that our, that our whole community trusts and knows, um, and, you know, I think that you, you get what you pay for in any situation, you hire a cheap plumber, you, you, you might have problems down the line, and, you know, you, anyway, you can chase that down the line, uh, but I just, you know, going forward, so this was for some overages in the, in the MDC health budget, uh, are, are, now that we're going into our FY twenty-six budget cycle, are we prepared to, uh, you know, now that, that they've been on the job for a little while, have a, have a more accurate estimate of costs, or were these for one-time costs?
This was related to the first year, and to your point, we were learning, we were working through issues, they were learning, we were also running into staffing issues, um, having to use a lot of travel nurses, um, to meet the requirements of McLendon as well as the needs of the, uh, contract, so we're working collaboratively with MDC, county manager, UNMH, finance, uh, procurement, to really examine those costs, we're working with county legal to say, what do we really need to do for McLendon that still keeps us on track, that needs to be done as a part of the service that UNMH is delivering, uh, we're communicating regularly, not that we weren't before, but, uh, if you recall, when the, uh, JPA was established, there was, someone had to act as fiscal agent, so we had to establish all of that, and, um, it's a lot of times I, my hat would be all twisted because I was acting as Burnaleo County Finance, and then it was like, oops, now I got to act as helping out the healthcare authority, and it's like, oops, I'm the fiscal agent because I'm doing the work on behalf of the, of the authority, and then not just me personally, there was a whole bunch of, of, uh, Burnaleo County staff in different capacities, so we're working through all of that, we've got our stuff set up.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I was gonna, I, I was just gonna say that, um, when I arrived, this was an issue that was brought to my attention, and while we had challenges in the first year, we're having challenges in the second, so here's, and I'm really glad our partner Kate Becker is here, and I'm really glad, uh, appreciating that, um, Chair Olivas, that the point you raised is that, um, we, um, as a county, reached out to our partners at UNMH because we were looking for quality healthcare for people who are in custody, and, um, what I can tell you now is that working very closely with UNMH, we are focused on being able to provide services, address cost containment, because irrespective of how, how much good work we want to do, we have to figure out how to do cost containment, and we will, um, and then the last thing I will say, and I just want to pick up on the, what, um, Shirley just pointed out, is that while we have to address McLendon, we also have a higher obligation just to make sure we're providing, um, the services that we need to provide there, so I'm hopeful that continuing to work, um, through Shirley's incredible leadership getting this off the ground, and just to remind everybody, this is, you know, providing medical services in a, in a custodial facility is unique, you know, just like many, many other branches of medicine, so what I'm hopeful is that we'll come back to, um, both with a plan around cost containment, where we can be very concrete about the steps we're taking, looking at the scope of work, and frankly, even increasing the amount of communication that we have, because it, it's been challenging, and that, and we should say it out loud and get better, and we will.
Thank you, uh, yes, Vice Chair Barboah?
Thank you for, I'm, I'm a little slow today, the main point I also wanted to bring up, um, and ask, like, I, I agree that, um, the two million over what our original contract, we need to make right, and UNM is going to probably find more things, and things are going to be rough, but I do continue, and this isn't the first time I've brought it up, that also, when people were not being successful, if we could provide great care, which I believe we'll get to, um, if we don't have a warm handoff, and while we're increasing the budget for UNM all the time, we have not looked at how we're increasing to the folks in community that get that warm help, fo- folks like First Nations, Casa de Salud, the other, um, community health clinics that provide that Medicaid assisted treatment, that keep people, um, in that hope, what we're hoping they come out of all the investment we're putting in while they're incarcerated, we hope that that can continue, increasing public safety, decreasing violence and, um, other things in our streets, right, so I just want to ask our county manager, um, to really come with a plan, how not to take from UNM, but to make sure we're also, um, reconciling with our community health partners who are the warm handoff, how do we, I would love to, um, see in our, in our upcoming budget, how we, um, how we make good by those, um, pieces.
Yes, I, I mean, thank you very much for the feedback, and I, I think that the point you're raising about being very, um, fulsome in our examination of our investments is, is important, again, just based on what I said earlier about not knowing exactly what we should be expecting from the federal government means that we're going to have to double down, one other thing I'll share with you is that Shirley and her team are looking at all the federal investments that we already have in our institution so that we can better understand that, because one of the areas that I'm most concerned about it is the implications and impacts for healthcare, so, um, yes, we'll follow back up, thank you for that direction.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? Really appreciate the discussion here and the great finance team we have that keeps all these balls in the air, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
A second for Vice Chair Barboah, seeing no further discussion, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Mr. Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, that passes five to zero, and, uh, next item is a Commission-sponsored art, item from Commissioner Barbara Baca on housing development services, and Commissioner Baca, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and sorry, I'm losing my voice, um, this is something you've seen before with the facts, um, relating to our housing crisis, our homelessness crisis that we're trying to address through our request for housing funding from the state legislature, so if we are successful and we get a hundred million dollars in Burnaleo County and the city of Albuquerque, this will help us to assure that we have an accountable mechanism and a plan, um, by which to expend those funds, and I just want to thank the county manager for, um, uh, participating in this, and so it's directing the county manager to take a look and come up with a plan for us to present to us next month on building that housing development capacity, so this, uh, taking away from the existing housing staff that we have now, it is filling the gap, I think that we, we have, um, and the idea being that we need to put, uh, resources and, um, uh, capacity, resources and staffing, professional services, contracts, that kind of thing, so that we can, um, be, um, effective, efficient, and quick in moving, um, any monies that we get for the important purpose of housing, so I, I would, um, o- offer the county manager an opportunity to say a few words, and, and I, uh, move approval and urge your support.
I'll second, Madam County Manager?
Thank you, I, I, um, I just want to say, I, I really appreciate this, um, uh, this directive, and I will just say to the board, or I'm sorry, the Commission, that I, I do believe we have an opportunity, both in terms of what we could be receiving from the state legislature, irrespective of that, we do need to refine the role that we're playing, it's such an important part of our, our, uh, role relative to quality of life, how we're, how we treat people, even our roles relative to economic development, it, it's, this is, housing is critical to everything we're talking about, so I'm very excited about this project and look forward to bringing you back something that, um, you all can evaluate and give us feedback on.
Commissioner Baca, anything else to add?
No, I urge your support, and I guess I will add one last thing, when we've gone up to the legislature, or, or they've come down to us here in Albuquerque and Burnaleo County, they've asked the question, if we give you this money, how can we be assured that you will spend it? This is, this is in response to that, we're listening to our legislators and saying, yes, we are capable, and we are coming up with an even more detailed plan, and you can trust that we will work with you hand in hand, we need these, um, important resources, so I urge your support, thank you.
Those of you Commissioners want to weigh in here? Um, I want to thank you, Commissioner Baca, for bringing this, and thank the county manager for, uh, her just, you know, diligent regard for this priority, uh, the op-ed that you had in the Albuquerque Journal this weekend, uh, working with Commissioner Baca on this, uh, I think it's, it's clear that, that you've heard us, that our staff has heard us, that this is a top priority, uh, later on tonight when we're going to look at our Behavioral Health Strategic Plan, which I'm very excited about, that talks about housing, um, it really is an all-hands-on-deck approach here, I think we've, we've got everybody working on this, and this is just one more way to say to our partners in Santa Fe, we hear you, we're serious, um, you know, give us the goals, and, and we are ready to meet those expectations, we're, we're ready to meet the challenge, and this sets us up to, to do that, so, uh, very much support this, I think it's a, a great resolution, a great start. Seeing no further discussion, um, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Of course, Chairman. Sorry about that, so Commissioner Frank Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Chair Olivas?
Yes. Passes on a five-zero vote, thank you, Madam Clerk. And congratulations, Commissioner Baca, next item, we have Economic Development, our, we're considering the State Fairgrounds Tax Increment Development District, and we have Executive Development Officer Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff requests approval of the administrative resolution declaring the intent of the County Commission to form the State Fairgrounds Tax Increment Development District, this is just introduction for the formation resolution, and we'll bring it back, um, intended at the March eleventh meeting for final approval, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Thank you, hello, Marcos, good to see you, and thank you for, um, all the work on this, and to Ms. Jill Sweeney, um, I, I'm excited, and you know, I'm also very anxious about this project, um, I want to make sure to mention that, um, I, uh, thank you for the resolution, that, um, the, I believe, because it's us that we're going to do good because it's us that we're going to do good around community engagement. It's not really detailed in the resolutions. I just want to ask the county manager to work with, and we have a meeting tomorrow as well, but to work for a work plan for community engagement, and to be reviewed at the first TID board meeting. And I want that to be able to include tools for community engagement, how much physically we're able to reach out around and, and think about stakeholders in a nuanced way. Like you heard tonight, there's people, there's people that go to the flea market as part of where they get their groceries and supplies, and there's people that go there to have a fun time with their family, or, and there's a range of folks. There's a whole group doing Revitalize San Pedro that is working with small businesses in the, and they've gotten grants in the area. So thankfully, Tyson sent a lot of those community outreach folks that we want to have those community meetings with, but if we can have a robust plan for the first TID board meeting, I would appreciate that very much. And, and I know we, and we'll talk more details about what that can look like, but thank you. Does that sound amenable to you?
Chair Olivas and Commissioner Barbo, yes, we're working with the state as well. We've given that list to the state as well to reach out. It's interesting, they've reached out to a number of the people ahead of time as well, and, but we'll continue to work with them on the community engagement process as well.
Thank you. And this, if I may, Chair, this resolution names the Board of Commission as the TID Board. I believe we talked that he will also serve, and that the State Fair Commission will serve as that true.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barbo, usually when the state joins the TID, usually they have the Director of the State Board of Finance on the TID Board Committee as well. So that's probably what will happen, because the state likes to have a representative being able to say what, for the state's wishes as well.
And what will be your role and our Economic Development Department's role in the TID?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barbo, the Economic Development Department will be working with the State Fairgrounds as well, as they attract different projects there as well, that bringing economic vitality to the area. And then just for transparency's sake, I'm also serving on the committee that is selecting the master plan, to, the master, the group that's going to be implementing the master plan for the State Fair, a master plan committee piece, too many master plans in there. Anyways, we're meeting as a committee tomorrow to discuss the different applications and then move through the RFP process.
Wonderful. Thank you. And is that information, because I believe the applicants are, is that information made public, the RFP, the folks who applied for the RFP?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Barbo, I don't believe at this time it is, because it's an ongoing RFP, but I'll defer to the state's procurement process and get back to you on that.
Wonderful. And I just ask that, as part of that, the master plan, so I want to sort of make a statement for our community and for our public watching, right, that the master plan is integral to what the future plans for this space are. As you heard from folks that did public comment tonight, the community is, I always say, our community is so full of leaders and people making really smart moves for our community, and they want to be involved, and I want them to be involved. I, I think the master plan is, is another point of where we really need to make sure that they're hearing from not just, you know, certain, oftentimes in government, I see that they hear from certain sections and not full, a full range of stakeholders. So I appreciate keeping us in the loop around the master plan and that stakeholders willing to help at any point. The other statement I want to make for our community that may be watching is that today we're passing the introduction of this TID. It'll be for final vote, as Marcos, Manager Director Gonzalez mentioned, for the March 11th. We plan to have a community, big community meeting at the State Fairgrounds, I've already talked to Marcos about, before that March 11th vote, just so that everybody that's interested can know the process, know what I know, know what you know. And then once we pass it, there, I, as I understand, there will be several points of engagement with community following, once the TID gets, starts moving. I also, so that's my statement to community, we are making sure.
Chair Olivas and Commissioner Barbo, and then just for clarification, this is really just a financing mechanism to be used in the master planning process, and the RFP that the state had released for the master plan did ask for plans on robust community involvement in that pieces. And then ultimately, this TID would then be funding whatever the master plan says is going to be happening at the, at the piece, but for public infrastructure, for public infrastructure, for state public infrastructure, and then the county, we're working on identifying some public infrastructure that would benefit some of the county's objectives that we want to see as well.
Thank you so much. This is an exciting investment, and we want to make sure we get it right for our community, that, that we're not creating a place where the community that lives there, that has lived there, that's trying to make better, isn't also pushed out of their community. I, last, now I forgot the last part I was going to say. I think we're good. We will have that community meeting to make sure everybody's well informed, and there will be plenty of community input.
The Commissioner, I mean, Chair Olivas and Commissioner Barbo, I'd just let you know as well, we'll actually have to do some posting on the property itself, so we'll plan to maybe use some other signage, but there'll actually be posted signs there, Tax Increment Development District is being considered, so, and then, to addition to the public forum that we're discussing as well, but there'll be actual signage placed at the fairgrounds and notifying the public about the introduction of the Tax Agreement Development District, and, and where to get more information as well.
Thank you. I remembered the last statement, just because the media made the last time, when the governor held a press conference on this, the media really made it sound like it's a done deal about the State Fair moving, what the master plan and an RFP process is to study all the opportunities for what might be best for the community, what might be best for the region, the area. We want this to be an economic development opportunity for our community. So nothing is said and done, that'll be, that's why it's important to be involved in the RFP process and, and how, as much as we can in this master planning process. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
I just want to say briefly, I wholly support Commissioner Barbo's call for community engagement. I think that is a way to ensure a quality product and project, and if you do that upfront, I think it's going to make things smoother all the way through. This is not only affecting the neighborhood, but this is an institution that we're talking about, that has been in my life, all of my life, and, and I think it probably all of them, well, I guess, everybody here, so. So, so I think that's as important, and, and I just don't think we can emphasize enough the process of community engagement, so I just want to support that. Thank you.
Any other commissioners wishing to jump in here? I do have a couple of questions, so, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Benson.
Might as well jump in. I think this is pretty exciting. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Gonzalez, could you walk me through what the TID Board looks like? What's the composition of that, and is there any flexibility on that, or, you know, maybe that hasn't been laid out yet?
Mr. Chairman, I have a bond counsel, Jill Sweeney, answer that question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the, members of the commission, the TID Act specifies that the county commission can choose to sit as the board, or can choose to appoint a board. If the county commission chooses to appoint a board, then that appointed board becomes an elected board in six years. At this point, and for various policy reasons, the county commission has chosen to serve as the TID Board of all of the TIDS in the county, to facilitate communication in the, with the development process between the developer and the, and the county. And in this case, you know, it's interesting, because the county is a co-applicant, so is communicating with itself, but it's always, always good to, to make sure that there's coordination.
So my, my follow-up question to that would then be, so you said that, that, I think if I follow what you said, if, if we appointed a board other than the commission, in six years, it would become an elected board?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that's, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's, that's part of the statutory and constitutional scheme for the way all boards and commissions in the state of New Mexico work.
Okay, understand.
And at this point, Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification, the, the election would be an, an election of the voters eligible to vote within the boundaries of the district.
And nobody lives within those boundaries?
Not yet.
That's a bit tricky.
It would be interesting now, wouldn't it? A case of first impression.
Okay, yeah, there might be a couple of people.
There's a recovery center, actually.
So I, I think that answers my question about how that would all work. How would, you mentioned that the state investment council, or somebody from the state would sit on this board. How would that work if the county commission is the TID Board?
Mr. Chair, the, the state statute requires that the Secretary of, in, in TIDS where state money is dedicated, that the Secretary of the Department of Finance and Administration and/or his or her designee also serve on the TID Board. And what we see now in current practice is that actually, we too, as the Director of the State Board of Finance, has served as the designee of, of the Department Secretary.
Okay. So basically, the TID Board becomes a board of six instead of a board of five. Okay. That makes sense. And, and there is no way to add or, or substitute any, any representation on there, besides the, the going the, the elected route, or what, what could end up the elected route? But I'm, I'm thinking of community, right, people that have come forward and expressed an interest in that.
So, Mr. Chair, and members of the, members of the board, or members of the commission, yes, in the past, we have seen boards add ex officio members that are not, not statutorily appointed, but who engage. We've seen a community member participate, we've seen the senators and representatives in whose district to sit, participate. So there is an opportunity, obviously, we have to follow the statute, that's the board, but the way that that's been handled in, you know, historically, is that ex officio seats can be created if, if that's the pleasure of, of the board.
Okay. I think that's really, really helpful. Thank you for walking through all that. And can, can that be done at a later time, or does that have to be done before we vote on the final action for this?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, typically, the governance of the board is included in the formation resolution. I think you, probably, when you add ex officio non-voting members, we could, you know, we could consider, we could consider that. In the past, I think we've, we've at least reserved those seats in formation resolutions, and Winrock is an example of that.
Great. All right. I think that's really helpful. And then I just, a couple of comments. I think that that meeting, that the pre-meeting is, is really good, because I think, you know, the word is getting out there about this. I'm excited about it. I mean, this is, it's not my neighborhood, but I don't live too far from there, along the San Pedro corridor. You know, this is, this is a big piece of property in the middle of our city, in, in a part of our city, that has seen really historically just kind of disinvestment or lack of reinvestment in that area. And so I think this is a real opportunity to, to bring some new life to that area, new ideas. We definitely, you know, I definitely want to make sure that it includes the community. You know, we heard the gentleman that came up and talked about his fond memories of the flea market, and I too have fond memories of the flea market. My dad still goes there like almost every weekend. So, you know, it's, it's a staple in that community, and I think that there's ways through creative and, and high-quality planning process that that can actually be bigger and better, if, if it's done right and, and done in the right regard, because this is like 230-some acres that we're talking about, it's a big site, and only a portion of that is used right now for the flea market. So I can imagine an environment where that could be even better. But again, the, the community engagement piece is really important. Had a meeting with former Mayor Marty Chavis, who's, who's working on this project with the governor. Really want to commend him and the governor for, for their leadership on this. I think that, that that is key. I understand that legislative partners are, are very interested in this as well, and so, you know, clearly building support and, but we need to continue to build that support and, and bring in the community to make sure that it's something that everybody benefits from. I'm glad you brought up the Winrock TID, that's in my district, and a great example of a really success, I think, a really successful TID that has brought a lot of reinvestment. It's brought the community in. I have neighborhoods that regularly send out updates on what's going on at Winrock, things they're excited about, working with the developers there on the farmer's market and the park and all those kinds of things. So there's huge opportunities for the community here, as well as just for the broader city and county as a whole, so I'm excited about this. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to. I move approval of the administrative resolution, AR 25, whatever number.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barbo.
Yes.
Mr. Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five to zero, and we'll see this again in March. Thank you. All right. On to our last couple items here this evening. Next up, we have approvals, item 10A. This is the Behavioral Health Authority Strategic Plan for 2025 to 2028, and we have Deputy County Manager Lindstrom to introduce our partners from the Behavioral Health Advisory Board.
So they just do left to right. Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Deputy County Manager for Behavioral Health, and we'd like you to entertain a motion to rescind Administrative Resolution 2020-51, which sustained the Behavioral Health Initiative Subcommittee Structure and Grant Approval Process, and secondly, to approve the Behavioral Health Authority Strategic Plan, which will be presented to you in accordance with our Behavioral Health Ordinance by the Behavioral Health Advisory Board Chair and Vice Chair. The Chair is Holly Mel, and she's a staff attorney with Disability Rights New Mexico. And our Vice Chair is Joseph Shaw, who's the Executive Director of Father's Building Futures. I want to take this opportunity to thank the two of them in their leadership roles, as well as the other members of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, because over the last three months, we have put them through county behavioral health boot camp, and they all have survived. And they will, I think, represent the interests of the county relative to the presentation of the plan. So with that?
Thank you.
And you just have to press this to move it forward.
Good evening, commissioners. So I am here presenting just a little overview of the Behavioral Health Authority Strategic Plan. And just to give a little background, which most of you are probably familiar with, because you've lived through it, in January 2023, Commissioner Barbo and Commissioner Olivas sponsored an administrative resolution to establish the Burnley County Behavioral Health Systems of Care Work Group. And that work group was created to provide input on remaining gaps and inadequacies in our behavioral health system, and to build upon progress already made in the county. Then in June 2023, the work group presented six recommendations to, to you all, to the Board of County Commissioners. And then in June 2024, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the Behavioral Health Authority Ordinance. Under the ordinance, a new Behavioral Health Authority Division was created, which included the creation of, of this board, the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, as well as two other committees. And the ordinance also called for the development of a three-year strategic plan. So the Behavioral Health Strategic Plan was developed by Deputy County Manager Lindstrom and Pivot Evaluation, who was the contracted provider that they worked with. And the strategic plan focuses on really transforming the behavioral health system in Burnley County, and it's built on these four main pillars that you see in the diagram. So organization will ensure that we have a new structure that's designed to improve our service delivery. Evidence-based practice is the next pillar, so that we can use data to make better decisions going forward. Community focus, which would ensure that the services are accessible to everyone in our community. And then sustainable funding. And then sustainable funding, which will create reliable, long-term funding sources so we can continue the programs. So this slide gives you a little bit of an overview of the organizational structure that the plan proposes. The plan establishes a clear and well-defined organizational structure and governance through the creation of three specialized departments. And the three departments will work together to create clear lines of authority and accountability while ensuring comprehensive service delivery. So the Department of Integrated Services is going to be the department that works like a conductor, ensuring that all the services are working together. And then the Department of Operational Support is going to manage the resources and funding, which will be sort of the foundation of, of the services to make sure everything's running smoothly. And then the Department of Behavioral Health Services is the department that will deliver direct care services to community members. You can see in the little diagram here, the organizational structure, the Board of Commissioners are at the top. And then the Advisory Board and the two committees are here to the side. The, our, our committee, as well as the Behavioral Health Technical Advisory Committee and the Behavioral Health Education and Awareness Committee. And then the Deputy County Manager will be responsible for overseeing the Behavioral Health Division, which will include these three departments. So the two departments you see colored in orange are the new departments that would be created under this plan. And they'll inherit some of the current programs that exist now. So the plan really focuses on several key principles to provide complete care for our community. And this goes over a little bit more about the Department of Integrated Services. So their job, their department will create a complete system of care through preventions, prevention services that focus on primary prevention and early intervention and risk reduction to try to stop problems before they start. It will also include crisis response to get services to people when they are in an emergency and when they need it most. It will also include treatment services that are evidence-based as well as including care coordination. It will also include recovery support, which will be focused on the long-term services and help that will keep people from having to come back. There are three current programs under the Behavioral Health Initiative now, including Tiny Home Village, the Resource Reentry Center, and the Family Wellness Shelter that are all going to fall under the Office of Recovery Support Services under this department. So this is a little bit more about the crisis response system. This plan envisions building a behavioral health crisis response system that will provide help 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days per year to focus on crisis response that works, such as the 988 Socialization Program and the 911 Integration Program. It'll also include mobile crisis teams that provide coordinated services with law enforcement and emergency medical services where responders can respond to someone at their location in an emergency. We all, the plan also includes crisis triage centers, which, which are safe places where someone can go for up to two weeks for stabilization. So a little bit more about the Department of Operational Support. Our goal is to make smart decisions by using data and data collection. The strategic plan aims to build a system that uses data we collect to make sure that we're improving our programs. Through data collection, analysis, and reporting, we, we want to ensure continuous quality improvement that focuses on tracking, service delivery, and outcomes. And it also will include a public dashboard, which would provide better transparency and accountability to the public and the community. We also want to see these systems, implementing systems that maintain a high-quality level of services by having regular reviews, measuring our performance metrics, and continuously improving the services as we go. The Department of Operational Support will fund Bernalillo County-operated behavioral health-related services and will contract and fund a comprehensive, well-networked, and accessible continuum of care. So this piece is about securing funding. Securing funding for the future through multiple sources to include the annual revenue of the Behavioral Health Gross Receipts Tax, which is projected at 32 million. We also have in the plan to use the opioid settlement funds, projected at 23.2 million. And the plan is designed to maximize Medicaid billing, which would make the programs more sustainable as we move forward. The plan also includes a, a contract with administrative service organization who can manage the provider contract and payment processing services so that we have better administrative efficiency by making use of our resources. This plan was designed to build strong community connections and supports throughout the stages of it. And we want to make sure that we're working with our diverse community voices through the advisory boards as well as leveraging the power of lived experiences through peer support services. The plan is designed to have a community-based focus so that we're serving people in the community and not sending them out of state or, or out of our area in order to receive care. And it's also designed to provide culturally and linguistically appropriate services. So to make it happen, the next steps would be to design an implementation plan. And that, that plan will focus on having clear steps so we know exactly what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. Resource planning so that we have what we need, progress tracking to measure our success, strong leadership, clear direction and support, community partnerships so that we're all working together, and then just continuous learning so we can adapt as we go. And so the next steps, this, the strategic, the draft strategic plan was presented to the Advisory Board on January 16th, and the board voted to approve it. And so the next steps would be if the commissioners adopt this strategic plan, the Deputy County Manager, Dr. Lindstrom, in concert with our advisory board, will start working on the two-year implementation plan and annual work plans to be carried out by staff. And then the plan would be that the Behavioral Health Authority Ordinance requires that we would give annual updates every September 1st to the commissioners on the progress of that plan. And that's it. And if, we will stand for questions and probably I will defer to Dr. Lindstrom, who has more knowledge about the details of the plan than I do.
Commissioner Barboa.
Thank you, I'm literally crying up here because I'm just so thankful for all of your leadership. Definitely for Dr. Lindstrom, I want to recognize, you know, that the county has been building the plane while flying it, building the, as whatever those metaphors are for what we've been doing since enacting the DRT for our behavioral health. And I want to, you know, definitely recognize all our staff that has worked on that and our, and thank our board members. I am just, but I'm overwhelmed with appreciation. You know, we have disability rights staff, we have Fathers Building Futures, folks bringing their best and expertise. I know this is above and beyond what your regular workday is, but I think it just is true testament to this super-strong strategic plan. I'm sorry, I'm crying, but, you know, I come from a family and I am that girl who has family across every corner of our state. And we've been largely suffering, our fam, not just my family, but our families and communities. And, and I've always known we could do, I, it just feels full circle when I started. I was 22 when I started working as a case manager with YDI. And I knew then that the barriers as a case manager that I kept bumping up to in trying to get services for the youth I was working with were unnecessary and maybe to burden some on both our families and, and even our providers. So I'm emotional because this feels like a true path towards figuring some of that out, making sure we're checking the balances, making sure we're keeping up with the daily practices, that we're not forgetting our disability community, that we're not devaluing people who've been incarcerated and want to re-enter and regain life with their families. And we're not forgetting the young people and the prevention intervention. So this feels so thoroughly robust that I am just very excited and thankful for you all. So I hope you take my tears as just such appreciation for this work that you all have done to build this together. And of course, to our, to our chair, who helped, and everyone who's helped bring this along. So thank you, everyone. I am so excited. I think, I just want to also commend everyone who worked on this. You know, the detail, the, the slides are great and amazing. And the, the actual plan is available to all the public on the website to see the actual depth and really looking to trauma-responsive and, you know, just every piece that, that can, that we can and should be ambassadors of. And I know with your, and so I just want to say that our board and you all giving up your time and commitment up to all of you and to the, and thank you for your leadership is, I know it always takes a little bit more to be chair and vice chair, but thank you for that because our communities need you. And I'm just really appreciative for this work. And, and I encourage everyone to go online and actually see this really robust thorough plan that I, I believe is going to make the difference. And I know we have the staff and passion to do the work. We just need some guidance and leadership. So thankful to all of the guidance and leadership you all have provided in this report and in this strategic plan. And I'm happy to move to approve this strategic plan and rescind our, I'll move to rescind administrative resolution, AR 2020-51, and as well to approve Behavioral Health Authority Strategic Plan presented by the Health Advisory Chair and Vice Chair today.
Second.
Thank you.
Second from Commissioner Baca. Did you, go ahead.
I just seconded the motion.
Oh, okay, I thought you were asking for the floor. Any other commissioners wanting to jump in here?
Could I just say, I, I really appreciate hearing that from you. I, the first job I ever had was a caregiver with families when I was in college. And it was during the behavioral health collapse. And so I really experienced firsthand how much families were hurting because of some of that. And it's one of the reasons I went to law school. And so I'm just really inspired and happy that you all are, are prioritizing this and wanting to work on it. So thank you.
Joseph, did you just say anything?
No.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to really be a part of this advisory board. You know, I, I would have never imagined myself being in this position because I am out of incarceration. I started with Fathers Building Futures as a client when I got out in 2012. And, and now I'm standing here in front of you all folks. And so it's a, it's a pleasure and an honor to work with Dr. Lindstrom and, yeah, and Holly, she's amazing. So just thank you, thank you for your belief and support, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
I just want to echo the comments of Commissioner Barboa. As I was reading the report, I was so amazed at the data that has incorporated the research that went into the plan. And I understand there's obviously work to be done. And I'm not historically a data person, if you will. I've argued for anecdotal evidence at times, and I think you can still make a valid argument for that. But to see the data, I've always felt, let's not be afraid of the data, it is what it is. It is what it is. And let's be honest about it, it's daunting, but there is no way to approach this problem effectively and efficiently without having a plan. So that is something I've been thinking about for many years. I was glad to come on this commission and learn that it was, it was already done. There's nothing for me to do other than just vote yes. But no, just thank you for the work, very impressive work, very detailed work. And yeah, I think this is, this is, I'm glad to, that it's happening and I'm glad to support it. And one little practical matter, I don't know if it, I think I may have asked somebody about this before, but is there any compensation of people on the advisory board? If, I think I heard that there was, and I, and I hope there is because it should be, absolutely should be compensated for your time. But anyway, thank you so much.
I'll just make the comment that it's small, we can't, it's not like what they probably deserve or an hourly rate or anything like that. But it is hopefully something that can help them be present and care for family and pay for gas to get here, whatever, those kind of things.
Commissioner Barbara Baca, did I hear anything from you? I thought I heard something.
Yeah, I, I just had my hand up, thank you. I, I just also wanted to echo what Frank Baca said and, well, everyone. And thank you, Chair and Vice Chair, for your leadership on this. And also Deputy County Manager Lindstrom. This has been a yeoman's task to get this together and put it into one concise, I feel, strategic plan. And this is the creation of something that has been long overdue, and so bravo, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. And I just wanted to say that to my colleague here, this has just been a labor of love for her. I just, I can't thank her enough for, for being on this journey with me. From, from the time that, that I first got on the board, we, as, as our Chair and Vice Chair of the Advisory Board laid out, this was one of the first things that we started working on, to get the input from the community, from the providers. And then, you know, it, it was off to the races from there. And so this has a, this has a deep history, goes way past me, past Commissioner Barboa, back to the, the implementation of this tax by our community that decided to invest in this. And so I really see this as, as making good on, on that promise. And I want to look forward, not backward. This is a huge moment for, for us at the county, for our community, that we are actually presenting a plan. This is, this is our guard, our goals and guardrails here. And I want to give just tremendous credit to Deputy County Manager Lindstrom, who jumped into his role right about the time that Commissioner Barboa and I were, were getting to work writing the Behavioral Health Authority Ordinance. And there was a lot of, of, you know, thorny issues that we had to work through. A lot of deep but very effective conversations that we had to have on these issues. And, you know, that got us to the point where we are today, where, where we have a, a working advisory board and we have really a, a plan for a, an authority that has this robust function, all the way from providing those services to building providers and building capacity to, you know, data and oversight. It's just, you know, the administrative services organization, there's so many things in here that are so critical to really taking this to the next level and making good on, on the commitments that we have to our community. So I in no way want to take away from that, I have two small amendments that I'd like to make. I'm sorry for being a pain here about this, but there's two minor things, I really do mean minor, in the scheme of this plan, that is, is very lengthy, very thorough. I don't think that, I, I hope that my colleagues don't find that these are controversial. I did provide these to Deputy County Manager and I passed them out. So the First Amendment is actually the first two pages, they're just, we accidentally put them on two pages. But what this does is removes the reference to naloxone vending machines and changes it to naloxone health and wellness supply distribution. So just kind of broadening that out a little bit so that we're not completely committed to this, this one mode of distribution, recognizing that, you know, the needs may change, that the idea may not work. And I realize this is a three, three-year plan, so, you know, in three years, it may be something completely different. So I just wanted to open this up. And then on, on the second page, this is in the same, it's the same amendment because it's really dealing with the same thing. It strikes and replaces the, the longer section on naloxone distribution and replaces that with expanding low-barrier access to harm reduction supplies for, and this should say, and, okay, sorry, I'll read that again, expanding low-barrier access to harm reduction supplies and other health and wellness supplies. So I make a motion to adopt the amendment.
Second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Benson. Any discussion on this First Amendment? Okay, second from Commissioner Benson. Any discussion on this first amendment?
No.
Commissioner Barbo, Vice Chair Barbo.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. No, I I think that sounded it's flexible enough and um for us to be creative with and and meet the needs of how. The locks that might need to be distributed, so thank you.
Okay, so no further discussion. Uh Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Amendment One passes on a five zero vote, amending the naloxone section. And then the second amendment here uh also to item ten A A um is on Plan Page thirty-four. And in the Agenda Packet, Page seven eighty-three. Um this would strike Section Four, which refers to. Uh overdose prevention centers um which uh can also be known as safe use sites. It goes by different terminology. Uh so I make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Baca. Um and I'll just to go into this real quick as far as uh my reasoning here. We've been working on this issue in the LGCC's uh board and the Subcommittee. And we've had pretty lengthy discussions about this specific issue. Um one of the concerns that has been raised is that this is not actually something that is um functional from a state standpoint. These are not. Um allowed under state law and so that is one concern. Um but the other concern, well, there's three concerns there, so that's one. Um part two is that in those discussions at the LGCC, which are really related to the opioid settlement funding. But um we have really heard from our partners at City Council that there is a a a. Pretty high level of discomfort with this issue and this uh this particular issue. And so um I think that this is also a way of of making sure that we are maintaining that relationship and acting in good faith with our partners. And then my third rationale um really is that. We have so much work to do. I mean, this is such an advanced and thoughtful forward-thinking plan. Um I think this is an issue that tends to divide our community. Um whether you support it or you're against it, it it tends to be. Something that that drives people into their respective corners. I don't think we need to do that at this point in time with. The level of need that we have and the number of other priorities that we have to pursue. We can do those. Uh while leaving this area out. And in three years when we redo this plan. If we see that that is a continuing need or something that has risen to the top as as hopefully we've checked off all the other things that we need to do. Um then we have that discussion at that time, so. Expecting there'll be some some debate on this, but I'll open up the floor to my colleagues.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, just want to hear uh Dr. Lindstrom's perspective on this. Um by the way, there's been so much said and I couldn't think of anything new. I I agree with everything that's been said before, but please uh. Your new, your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson. Um. You know, I I thought a lot about this, particularly in a historic context. New Mexico has been a pioneer. In harm reduction going back to the HIV crisis. Um and we were one of the first states to adopt needle exchange, uh for example, and I could go on. So um given that history and that we've led the way in this area of harm reduction uh for a few decades now. That we would build on that history, um because this is a prime promising best practice. The opioid or the overdose prevention centers that have been established have demonstrated that they do save lives. And it's not just about uh providing an um an environment where there can be a safe administration of drugs that are safe. Um but it's an opportunity to employ people with lived experience. Who are in recovery themselves from substance use disorders uh to do uh meaningful engagement. With those who access these services, to do motivational interviewing, to plant the seeds of hope. And I think it's worth consideration that um we work with the state to see if we couldn't. Pilot one of these centers and see if we can demonstrate the same kinds of efficacy as some other states have. Who've implemented these the these uh programs. So in the overall scheme of things, yes, there's a lot in the strategic plan. I've got more than enough work to do. If this is not what we're going to do, you know, out of the gate. You know, uh so be it, so to speak, but uh Commissioner Benson, since you asked the question. Uh that's basically my response.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. Commissioner Olivas, I'd like to hear um your response to that. I that means a lot to me. And his, you know, boots-on-the-ground experience, so if you could respond.
I I don't know that I that I have a response, you know, I I feel like uh I laid out my my points that we have um. Some tension, I think, with the City Council on this particular issue. I think we have a number of items that that we can tackle that require significant investments and, you know, time and resources. Um and I think that that to some extent it does um create some tension in our community. That's, you know, tension isn't always a bad thing. There's there's nothing wrong with that. Um that these conversations are important, they're worth having. And so um you know, it's it's a. Not a hill that I'm going to die on here for this, but I I do think that, you know, I've heard from some of my constituents that are uncomfortable with this idea and. You know, what what is known and unknown about it. And so um I don't disagree with anything you said that that done properly, there's there's. Evidence that this can be very efficacious and effective. Um it's just not something that I'm particularly ready to support at this time, but. Vice Chair Barbo.
Thank you, um and thanks for um bringing this. Thank you for your comments. I if also if you will care to choose, I my, you know. It's just, it's just like everything, like, right? When we started methadone treatment or for a long time, including up until recently, right? Medical assisted treatment was not considered a norm in the field or and very much stigmatized. But when we're talking about, like, when I say, like, it means so much to have lived it, that you're desperate for whatever approach. Might help your loved one or might help yourself if you're the person suffering through that disorder. Um that when we take the, I I think from the prevention community, from the substances community, right? Folks are looking for every opportunity to have a chance with folks to be able to get them to that next step. And for some, medical assisted treatment might be forever. For many, it's meant to be something that they can wean off. Um but we have to be able to, what what it means is it takes the criminal element. Out of what, so we're no longer saying that these that these folks will be in um MDC. Suffering through there and our COs and warden having to deal with them, right? Because, well, not that that's going to stop it completely, but I'm just saying that these are other avenues. For folks to safely use, which can save lives and prevent overdose. But also takes that criminal element that you're hiding behind someone's house or in the. Baskin Robbins parking lot doing your thing, right? Because you can go here, you can be safe. Someone medically can assist you. And when that person is ready, then we have everyone there to say. We have medical assisted treatment or I can connect you to an inpatient services or we can get you at our crisis stabilization to detox right now. And I think that that's what overdose prevention centers for me provide. An opportunity both for safety for and to save lives, but also for that entry point that is so hard to come across when. Folks are already stigmatized and pushed to the margins. It's hard to find a place that um that when you are ready or you're feeling the option of. Possibly being ready for treatment or recovery or even just discussing it. That there, those are the places where you go, just like peace place people go to their drug dens because that's the place that they feel safe. And um you know, the those places, we know, we see them all across the the city and the county. Um and this would make a place that would be safe, also take them out of that need for the art. Bus. A lot of people are doing drugs on those art bus stops because they have a charger and they have a shade structure. It's not even because they're catching the bus. Um they have a place where they could charge their phones and um they could be in a shade structure. If we had a place where people could feel like they could be treated with respect and dignity. Then the possibilities open up for recovery and treatment and for access to other resources for them.
Mr. Chair, if I might, um you know, um in our meetings with the LGCC Subcommittee, we discussed this as well. And I appreciate the community residents being concerned and there's some sense of, you know, we're enabling. Uh people to maintain uh their dependence on substances and we certainly heard that beginning decades ago when. Methadone was first introduced, for example. Um but one of the counterarguments is that we also hear from the business community. About syringes outside their their doors and um. Uh folks with substance use disorder uh using in our public parks. And outside schools or recreation centers, et cetera. You begin to diminish that community problem. By virtue of offering safe places for people to um have their drugs of choice administered safely. And without um having to be exposed to all the adulterants that end up in the uh the street drug supply. So that's just something else I'd ask the commission to consider when you take your vote.
I I wanted to respond to that real quick and then Vice Chair, um I I would, I don't. I don't totally disagree with that statement, but I would point out, for example, we have a lot of shelter beds in our community. Every night, almost. Uh now that it's really cold, it's it's a little different, but many nights of the year, we have shelter beds in our community that are unused. That that people don't want to go to. They're offered beds, ACS rolls up on them, APD. Um other, you know, street medicine providers, folks like that, offering them beds, offering them transportation to those beds. And they decline those services. And so just, you know, I, there will always be a percentage of the population that will. Not want those services, including going to uh a safe use site. They're they're, you know. Regardless of the benefits or the potential benefits to that population, I think that, you know, I don't think that we can safely proclaim that, you know. There may be a reduction in needles on the street, but I I even that is, you know, we we don't really know because we don't know how this will be accepted. By the community of of folks that we hope would use it, but I don't disagree. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I I just wanted to respond quickly to um. That perspective because I think there's not enough education about what some of the barriers are to the shelter. Systems and I can say as someone who's been doing the outreach to homeless individuals with disabilities, that people who. Need assistance with their daily living activities cannot go to any of the shelters right now. They are not accessible or safe for those people. And so I I can say from my experience with my clients who I have brought to city council meetings to share, like. They are trying to get help and trying to access support and going through like. Lots and lots of barriers to try to get that help and support and it's not always what people are thinking it is.
I appreciate you sharing that perspective. Um I promised Commissioner Barboa and then Commissioner Baca has your hands up and then we'll go to Commissioner Frank Baca.
Okay, I I'll chime in quick, just the two things. I'm thankful for the work with Keep Better Alive. I've been able to work with so many families that are experiencing. Loss and or substance use and in and in recovery. And Nico, I can't believe I'm forgetting his last name right now, but he's been one of the, he came into a meeting one day and he said, okay, imagine. You are able to walk into this place, you have a choice between what kind of um substance you'd like to use of choice. You um have, you can use it um safely and if you need help, someone's there to um to help you. Well, I assumed he was talking about a safe use site. He said, I'm actually talking about a bar, right? Right now, we provide an opportunity for people to go, have their choice of drink. They are then monitored. Should they become um incapable, somebody can call services for them. They can get medical care if needed and or police and um and then they're able to safely use the su- the substance alcohol of. The the various ranges of alcohol that they want and be safe. And I think that. Um when he said that, in my mind, I right away was already thinking safe use sites, but he's correct, right? In that our our bar establishments. Are part of what I would consider safe use sites, especially given that alcohol is the number one killer of substance uses in our state. But just to also the point, just to say, I I believe we also have a lot to do. I don't um want to belabor the point, other than that I know that. Community has largely asked for this and I always believe that when you're just not, when you're living it, you know what your community needs. But the state has also reached out since my first year as commission to talk about the opportunity for state safe use sites. The state, at least in its right now administration. Is open to this. I think there is ability to partner, pilot, try new things without necessarily um, you know, tapping into. A but a big amount of need here based on our limited access to funds. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yeah, thank you and I apologize since I'm not there. Um um I I I'm hearing. That um Dr. Lindstrom says that we can do this and work with the state. Does the language in the strategic plan? And I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not sure what the amendment is um exactly, but can we amend the language to say that we will. Work toward that approval with the state? Because I'm I'm hearing it said that that um. These are not legal to uh pursue in the state of New Mexico right now. And so is a strategic plan is a long-range plan? Do we have medium, you know, and long-range goals in the in in this particular issue? Because I have also heard. You know, the pushback in communities about where they would be located and, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Uh Dr. Lindstrom and and Commissioner Barboa, you know, you don't shy away from something that's worked in other communities. But it it, are we ready to go hand in hand with the state to pursue this or can we soften the language in our strategic plan now to begin this work? With the state? I guess it's a lot of, a lot in one question.
Dr. Lindstrom?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, um I certainly would be open to that. I think that you've got, I think, a motion. Uh before you and we're in the discussion phase. Um so to me, it would be a question of whether or not the chair is amenable. To changing that language, um but I certainly would be amenable to it.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Baca?
Yeah.
Okay, um well, I'm going to look at something here on the. In the plan and will we, will I do that? If we could uh get Commissioner Frank Baca in and Commissioner Benson also wanted to chime in.
Just want to say briefly, I'm not sure that I really know enough about this concept, um but I I think I would not want to at this time exclude it. And so whether if we pursue it and it may run into a dead end because of legal or practical concerns, I don't know, but at this point in time, I think I'd be voting against it. The motion because I wouldn't want this to exclude it, although I do want to say that I'm not necessarily convinced that it's a good thing, but it'd be, but I just don't know. So I will vote against the current motion.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um Commissioner Bar- uh Barboa's comments actually got me thinking. What would uh what is the evidence of of uh safe areas like this? Where it um enables illicit activity um in the community? Uh because I think of uh. Bars, bars are legal and we have a drinking problem here in the state. Um but, you know, they could theoretically do a responsibility. The legalization of marijuana has had mixed results. Um and there has been an increase in uh black market sales. So if we're doing this and and uh kind of supporting that, is there evidence in other communities where it? It attracts drug dealers or the drug market?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Benson, um I'm not aware of that phenomenon occurring, but if we were to proceed. With a pilot project in uh coordination with um the state. Um we would be doing more of our own due diligence. The county manager and I uh discussed this a few weeks ago and she suggested. Uh that perhaps I should visit some of these sites and other locations and learn firsthand. As well as doing a deeper dive in the existing research literature. To see if there are some caveats like you're suggesting, uh Commissioner, that we ought to take a closer look at. that we ought to take a closer look at.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. I would support your motion to strike that section with the caveat that if there is research to support, that it's good for the community as a whole. We could add it back in. But I would second that motion. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's our list of speakers. I had one question after that debate. Based on what was mentioned there, do these sites actually provide drugs to the individuals going into them?
My understanding is that they have certain stock supply. So you don't want people to bring drugs off the street that are adulterated, that might have Clorox in them, and God knows what else. We see a lot of lidocaine and xylazine and other adulterants to make fentanyl and other substances go further and, you know, further extend the profits of the cartels and other suppliers, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. I think at this time, I'm going to keep the original motion on the floor and see where it goes. So I think we've had a very robust debate on this and, you know, really appreciate the idea being brought forward regardless. And, you know, I think it's something that, regardless of what happens, we need to keep, we need to keep on top of what's happening with this as it evolves. So, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll on the amendment two.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
No.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Uh, no.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. So the amendment passes on a 3-2, and that takes us back to the original, or the amended plan, I should say. Any further comments or questions, discussion on the plan? No? All right. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to all of you for your hard work on this.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, if I might, I'd like to thank the commission for having the confidence in me and partnering around building a new behavioral health system of care. And hopefully, I've done justice to your vision and mission around the ordinance, et cetera. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two more items. Next, we have item B, economic development, I-40 Trade Port Corridor with Project Soul Source Agreement presented by Executive Development Officer Marcos Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The economic development staff requests that the county manager to approve and execute a sole-source procurement between Burnley County and Global Logistics Development Partners and any subsequent amendments to allow continued work through the term of the contract as project coordinator for the I-40 Trade Port Corridor. This is something we just have to bring forward annually as a sole-source contract for the commission to approve. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from the commission? All right, not seeing any. Do we have a motion for approval? Commissioner Benson, I'll second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Mr. Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. It passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, last item of the evening. This is a commission-sponsored item, letter of support for spouses of service members. And we have Vice Chair Barboa and Commissioner Benson to present.
Wonderful. I'll let our Commissioner Benson lead with this. And do we want to read the letter, right? I don't know that I have copies of it.
Yes, let me pull up a copy.
I can pull it up on my...
If you can look it up, I'll speak to this.
Sorry, I was so excited. I didn't prepare myself for this important part.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is, actually, I think this is an easy one, hopefully. I think it's a slam dunk and a high five for the commission. Commissioner Barboa and I sit on the Kirtland Sustainability Committee, and they were talking about legislation right now that's important for the Kirtland area, but not just Kirtland area because this affects the entire state. This letter is, would be, if I can get your approval, a letter of support for these bills to the House, to the Senate, and then on to where it's been voted down before at the Senate Judiciary. And what it is, is reciprocity for licensure for medical professionals. I think it's a no-brainer for multiple reasons. For the Kirtland Air Force Base, it's a no-brainer because you have spouses that move with their military-serving spouses. They're non-military, but they're licensed, healthcare professionals or health professionals. But they've got to sit and test for license here in New Mexico, which can take three to six months. Meanwhile, we have an absolute shortage here at UNMH, at all the hospitals, at the clinics, behavioral health, but not just Burnley County. This, I mean, if they pass this, this would relieve pressure across the state as well, especially in military bases. But not just military bases. You have spouses that move here or even just individuals on their own moving here, and they've got to take reciprocity. Meanwhile, almost half of the United States recognizes this reciprocity. New Mexico does not, even with our dearth of caregivers. So Commissioner Barboa and I were speaking about this, and we said, let's get with the commission, see if we can get a unified voice of support, which has massive weight, which we've learned, sending letters of support up to the legislature. And it would be beneficial to the entire state as well as to these poor individuals who just want a job and they just want to fulfill their calling and what they've trained for. So that's it. Commissioner Barboa?
Yes, thank you for bringing up the idea of a letter. We both supported this. I want to mention that, you know, at those Kirtland Sustainability meetings, it's such a great meeting because we get to meet with all these military personnel that are, and that working. And one of their missions is quality of life for other military. And the top of their list is this, that they, it would improve their quality of life being here stationed at Kirtland Air Force Base if their spouses could earn wage in the licenses that they already have. And given our shortages, like Commissioner Benson said, it seems like a no-brainer. I do want to name out, right? There's, the bills would grant gator access to more licensed providers for our entire state, obviously impact and benefit the University of New Mexico Hospital. Us here at the county, we have several nursing, social work. There's a list of licensures that would be approved that could be unapproved under these compacts that our county could benefit from, the City of Albuquerque facilities, obviously. And we just know, the Metropolitan Detention Center. We know the impact, and we also know the shortage of qualified licensed people that, to name, the list here, audiology and speech-language pathology, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social work, psychology, teaching, in addition to many, nursing, practice-registered nurse, cosmetology, dental, dental hygienist. All of these neat folks need this so that they can get to work benefiting our community in multiple ways. So I hope we can have your support on this letter to send to our speaker and our president pro tem in hope to get this passed. We heard clearly that it's often stuck in Senate Judiciary. So if you have the time to go speak up to our Senate Judiciary members, specifically the chair, then let's get this passed. But I hope we can have your support today for this letter and all our names signed on here unanimously.
Mr. Chair, yes, and thank you, Commissioner Barboa. That is my hope as well,